We'll call a Shakopee City Council meeting to order for November 19th. If we could please take the roll.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Delaney.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Councilmember Lara.
Here.
Mayor Lehman.
Here. Item number three is pledge of allegiance. If you'll join us in standing for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is a special presentation.
There are none, Mayor.
There are no special presentations?
No, sir.
All right. Item number five, approval of the agenda. Any changes from council or staff?
Mayor, from staff, item six point L. There's a new resolution which is on the table in front of you. The resolution previously stated there was a 10% match, but in actuality, there's a 0% match that's required.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay. Mr. Contreras.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as president.
Mr. Whiting. Mr. Reynolds, you want to read the consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir. These are the consent agenda items for Tuesday, November 19th of 2024. Six A is the monthly financial report for October of 2024. Six B is surplus property declared by the police department. Six C are city council meeting minutes. Six D is the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency's implementation grant for community resilience program application. Six E is a donation of fire safety equipment from Amazon. Six F is a donation from Cub Foods in memory of long-term employee of the fire department, Edward Sito. Six G approves the waiver of special assessment appeal rights with TTT Shakopee LLC for the Merris Street, 13th Avenue, and Hanson Avenue Utility Extension Project. Six H accepts a proposal from SEH for design and in-construction services for the 2025 downtown ADA lighting and tree rehabilitation projects. Six I is a change order for Sand Venture for irrigation installation and repairs. Six J is a change order for Sand Venture with Axel Omen for additional work. Six K is the union contract for police captains. And six L is the Minnesota Department of Transportation Safe Routes to School Design Assistance Program application.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Is there any discussion on the motion and second to approve the agenda? Any discussion?
This is just for the agenda, not the consent agenda.
Yep. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed. Item number six, consent agenda was just read by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, second by Mr. Delaney. Discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, public comment. If you're in the audience to address the city council on an item that is not on the agenda tonight, now would be the time to step forward and speak to the city council. So if you're here for an item not on our agenda, please step forward and we'd love to have you. Anybody? Seeing none? Item number eight, business removed from consent agenda. There is none. Item number nine is a public hearing. Public hearing for Stagecoach Road Improvement Project. Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Will second.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, second by Mr. Lara. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing is now open.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight for two different projects that will have public hearings on. The first project is our Stagecoach Road Improvement Project. This is the first public hearing for the project, known as the improvement hearing. Sorry. Never mind. Stagecoach Road. This is the existing roadway between the roundabout at Highway 101 and Stagecoach and Henches Way. Here's the project location, sorry about that. The project starts about 750 feet east of that roundabout and continues on Stagecoach Road to a point about 350 feet south of 13th Avenue. Existing conditions of the roadway? The roadway is about between 36 and 40 feet wide. It's a rural bituminous roadway, meaning that there are, there's no curb and gutter along the roadway. Stormwater ditches convey the runoff along the roadway. There's also a United Pacific Rail crossing at the south end of the project for their rail yard. Along the roadway, there are no pedestrian facilities. Essentially, there's no trails or sidewalks. If any pedestrian users want to use the roadway, they'd be riding by skills or walking along the shoulders of the road. The city has a couple utilities along the roadway. There's a sanitary sewer force man that provides sewer service for the properties along Stagecoach. There's also a water main located along the roadway to provide utility service. A little bit of background on the road, it was first reconstructed in 1998, and the roadway has deteriorated significantly since that time. Proposed improvements, the project includes constructing a full-depth reclamation of the roadway, which means that we will grind up the existing bituminous and gravel under the roadway and provide a new pavement surface. The project also includes narrowing the roadway to 32 feet wide, including a four-foot shoulder along the north and east side with curb and gutter. And I'll get into the details for why we're proposing curb along that side. And a six-foot bituminous shoulder along the south and west side of the roadway. With that, we would propose to construct an eight-foot wide pedestrian trail along the north and east side, providing pedestrian connectivity. There would also be rail crossing improvements with the new road and trail that crosses the UP rail. And then bridge modifications to support the new trail system along the roadway, essentially constructing barriers separating the trail, the bicycle users, pedestrians, from the vehicle users. Now, part of the reasons why we're adding the curb and gutter, proposing to add the curb and gutter of the project is because converting from a rural section to an urban section actually allows us to condense the roadway footprint, which means we don't need to acquire right-of-way from property owners or impact. There's a significant drainage ditch for the county highway 101 roadway directly adjacent to Stagecoach. If we need to accommodate a ditch between the road and the trail, we'd have to take up a lot more space to accommodate that runoff. So we're proposing to add curb and gutter to be able to push that water underground through a pipe system and convey it while still being able to construct that trail. The trail and the curb and gutter also provides a physical barrier from vehicles to the pedestrians because there'll be a raised concrete section and then a boulevard between that curb and A little bit about restoration for the private properties along the roadway. Those that have driveways that connect to the roadway would be replaced with similar materials. So if they have a concrete driveway, they'd be replaced with concrete. If they have a bituminous driveway, they would receive a bituminous driveway connecting to the new roadway. And then disturbed areas along the road would be reseeded with hydroseed and topsoil. This table shows the proposed cost for the projects according to the feasibility report. The total project cost is $4.04 million. Of that, $3 million is roadway costs, which are a portion between the capital improvement fund and special assessments to benefiting properties. Storm sewer and water main work would be shared between the city storm sewer fund and also cost sharing with Shakopee Public Utilities. This project is, falls in line with the city's special assessment policy for public improvements. Essentially, what that special assessment policy states is that the final amounts for that assessment would be based on the actual cost of the street improvements. At this point, right now, we have preliminary costs based on an engineer's estimate. The final assessment amounts would be based on the actual cost after construction is completed. The special assessment policy states that 30% of assessable street improvements will be used to determine the total assessable amount. So not all parts of this project are assessable. The trail, the curb and gutter, those are costs that are not assessed to property owners. Stagecoach Road is also a unique roadway because about half the road doesn't have frontage. Most of it fronts 101 as a frontage road, so half of the roadway basically is not assessable as well. Those shares are taken out of the assessment calculations. So the portion of the project that is assessed is the frontage that's adjacent to benefiting property owners and the portion that doesn't include the curb and gutter or trail system. The assessments are proposed on a cost-per-acre basis, meaning that the total acreage of your property is used to determine what your assessment amounts are. So larger properties would get a higher share of those assessments. That's key because in our special assessment policy, there's various ways that properties can be assessed. There's a lot of properties along this roadway that maybe have longer depth properties but are narrower frontage, where they may be larger properties but may not have the same share of frontage along the roadway. So looking at a per-acre basis and an area basis provides the appropriate benefit for the properties along the road. And again, the final assessment amounts would be considered at a second public hearing, which would be held upon the completion of the project, which we're anticipating would be in November of 2025. Now, based on the costs that we've estimated today through the feasibility report, the preliminary assessment amount is $2,549.81 per acre. Again, that's a preliminary amount. That's not the amount that's going to be assessed to the property owners. That amount would be recalculated after the project costs are identified after construction. This is our assessment map. The properties shown in blue are those that are benefiting from the roadway that would be receiving the assessments for the project. You can see that just east of the Stagecoach Road Roundabout is where the project would start and where the assessments would begin, all the way down to 13th Avenue along the south side. Next steps is here, we're here tonight to hold the public improvement hearing. After the city council holds the public hearing, we would be asking the city to adopt a resolution authorizing the project and ordering preparation of plans and specifications. I just want to note that that resolution, because this is a council-initiated project based on Minnesota statutes 429, that requires a four-fifths vote of the council in order to order the improvements. Beyond that, if the council does order those improvements, the city would begin immediately on preparing plans and specifications, which would come back to the city council in February for approval. Then the city would go to public bidding for the projects, which we would bring back to the council to order contract in March. Construction would begin sometime around May of 2025 and be completed in August or September of 2025, where then we would declare those costs to be assessed to property owners, call for a second public hearing, which is called the assessment hearing. And then we'd hold that assessment hearing in November prior to certifying the assessments to the county in December. And at that point, the assessments would be first payable on your taxes in 2026. So next steps, that's the presentation I have. I can stand for questions after the council conducts a public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Mr. Whiting?
Alex, is there any soil condition issues in the area that we might either anticipate? Or because I know there's a lot of water in the area, maybe you're ready for it?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council members. We did do preliminary geotechnical evaluations of the roadway, meaning we conducted soil borings. The pavement design is based on the condition of those soils. We do include estimates for soil corrections along the project, which are included in the engineer's estimate. The areas where I'd be most concerned are where we're widening the roadway to accommodate the trail, where potentially we have to remove more topsoil in area where the road doesn't exist. In those cases, we've already preliminary estimated what those costs would be for that additional correction.
If I can follow up. Judging from the project, there's no sewer and water involved in this project because it looks like a low cost to me. And maybe not to the property owners, but if you added sewer and water.
Yeah, thank you very much for that question. Because the city already has sanitary sewer and Shakopee Public Utilities has a water main system serving the properties, there are no utility improvements proposed at this project other than minor adjustments for water main, raising gate valves and adjusting for the roadway, but those costs are relatively small in relation to the project. So really, the project includes repaving the roadway and then constructing that curb and gutter, storm sewer system and trail. And again, those additional costs for the trail, storm sewer and curb are all paid by city costs and not assessed to property owners.
Thank you.
Questions of staff? Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jordan, I just want to make sure and make sure the public understands, it's my belief that the railroad will be participating in this assessment.
Yeah, thank you very much. The railroad is included in the assessment roll. They are the long parcel that is along the railroad here, where my mouse is showing. Per state statutes, railroads are not exempt from special assessments, so they are included as a part of our special assessment policy.
Any other questions of staff? I have a couple. One, was the railroad crossing, Mr. Reynolds? I guess I'll expand on that. Are they participating in the design for the trails crossing here for the safety of the pedestrian crossing? And I mean, it seems to benefit them with a switching station right there.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. They're participating in the fact that they are working with us to accommodate the pedestrian crossing across the railroad. Per their policies, the city pays for those costs for not only the infrastructure improvements, but also the design for those rail crossings. They were able to work with us through preliminary design to choose a location for the trail to allow us to move forward with the project where we could work under our current schedule. However, the costs that they'd be paying for those crossings would essentially be what they're assessed for the improvements.
Okay, and the next question I had was design standard of the road? I know there's a lot of truck traffic on this road, so what would be the design standard that we're looking at building?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a really good question. What the city does is we estimate the volume of the roadway and also a percentage of heavy vehicles along the roadway when we design our pavements. So with this roadway, the pavement section, I believe, is six inches of bituminous over eight inches of reclaimed material. So again, that reclaim is grinding up the existing asphalt and that existing base. That's higher than the city's typical standard for a residential roadway because this roadway does carry increased truck traffic and a higher volume.
Okay. And then the last question I had is there, and I'm glad you got this assessment map up, because is there any properties that are being assessed that are privately held that are not being utilized, so there's no benefit to them?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a good question as well. Each property that is included in the assessment roll is a developed property, meaning that there's already a use on that property.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? No. This is a public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this item, now would be the time for you to come forward. And there's a seat and a microphone there for you. And we'd love to hear your comments on this project. Is there anybody here for this project? Just go ahead and grab that microphone and pull it up to you. It's kind of heavy, so it might feel like it's connected, but it's not.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you for listening. My name is David Turnberg. I am here on behalf of Stagecoach Real Estate Holding. Be on the east side there, just south of the bridge. Couple things that I want to mention is we are being considered a beneficial user of this road, of which if you've been on this road, the train is blocking the traffic at least 50% of the time during the day, and there's cars lined up for 10, 20 deep. So I wouldn't even say I'm benefiting from that. I do agree the road could use some rework, but I think that's something that should be addressed, is who's going to take the initiative to talk to the railroad and hold them to, you know, what they need to be held to? Their trains are there consistently. You have cars lined up. They line up in front of our driveway, so we can't get out. They line up on the south side, and there's nothing but U-turns. I have been there at times where I've sat there for over 40 minutes. I don't turn around because the minute I do, the lights go off. That's my luck. But I think we have a bigger problem here than just deteriorating road. We have a situation with this railroad that it causes way more issues, and I can guarantee if the other users were here outside of the railroad, they would concur. You talk to Darlene Sign down in the corner, half their yard is used for people turning around. Now, if you want to design turnarounds, that might be beneficial to people because then we know that we have a way out of there. It would be nice if we at least maybe had or held the railroad to a standard where they had to put up a timer that said the next opening will be in 10 minutes, and people can make their decision if they want to wait or turn around. But I think we all know that they're pushing their limits. I believe that there is, and I can't say exactly what the time limit is, that they are allowed to have those gates down, but I think anyone can tell you if anyone would have shown up or if this was put out to more than just beneficial owners, that this is a real situation. So with that being said.
Let me, can you clarify which property you are on here? Are you south of?
Right there.
Okay.
Yep. We're Stagecoach Real Estate Holding, so we are just south. And we have trucks, right? We're Northland Concrete Masonry is our main company. And then we lease out the property just to the north that has truck traffic in it, but a lot of times, our guys have to sit there and wait because there's backed-up traffic and we can't even get out of our development. Or the safety factor of people whipping a U-turn trying to get out of there. So maybe, maybe we postpone this project for a year and do a little bit more investigation and figure out how do we work with this railroad? What about the options of digging down and having the road go underneath it and the railroad track goes over it? I know there's no room to put a bridge over the road because you have 169, but I believe there are other ways to improve the traffic. So that's one thing. Another thing, and I know this is only partially yours, but we've been at this property since 2017, developed majority of the property. We have 17 some acres, so we have a pretty hefty assessment. Since the year 2020, our assessed value on our property was $8.6 million. 2021, 10.5. 2022, 11.5. 2023, 12.7. 2024, 15.7. And for 2025, we jump a staggering $3 million to 18 million. Now, I know that's not just, that's a county thing, that's a city thing, there's a lot of things that go into it, but how can my property have no changes since we built in 2017 and my value has doubled? Went up, went up over $10 million. We pay taxes from 2020, up $45,000, up $23,000, up $18,000, up $48,000, and next year, $68,000. How do I tell that to my tenants? Hey, here, guys, you're getting a new road, but you still got to wait for the train, and I got to charge you a good portion of $68,000 extra. Mind you, again, I know it's not just a Shakopee thing, I'll be taking this up with the county as well, but I think it needs to be, I think it needs to be talked about because on top of that, you're going to want another 45 grand so I can get a nice road to sit for the railroad. I appreciate your time. That's what I wanted to say today. It would be really nice if we could step back and see if there is a longer-term plan. Why waste $4 million right now just to put lipstick on a problem when maybe it's $5 million and we dig a tunnel and have through traffic and no one else is complaining?
We appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Let me, I'm going to address just two of them, and we'll let Mr. Jordan do the rest of them. The railroad crossing issue, you are certainly not alone. I've spent many of my life days there too, waiting. I will say that the railroad and the FRA, Federal Rail Authority, they're like two steps up above Congress. You can't get them to do it, you know? It's very difficult, I'll say that. There is a state statute of how long they can block that crossing. They certainly don't want to make that too public. I don't mind if we do, it's state law. They don't want to. And there's a sign, a little blue sign at every crossing with a phone number and a crossing number, and you're supposed to call that number with the crossing information. And it actually does work because I've done it myself, sitting, while I was sitting on that road. So the people actually do take that information and act upon it. But they don't make the sign very easy for anybody to see that's sitting in line. You have to physically get out of your car and walk up to it to see it. As far as all the other engineering-type things that you mentioned, I'll let Mr. Jordan comment on that.
Can I add one comment? When we had the railroad here, we mentioned the time limit that the state has on shutting down the road and the time limit that the federal government has is longer. And they said that they go by the federal government rules, not the state rules. And they wouldn't budge on that.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The railroads are an incredibly difficult organization to work with. I think that's an understatement. We have been trying to work with this particular railroad, not only in this particular area, but also in our downtown area for at least, Mayor, 25, 30 years.
Yep.
The mayor and I are part of a railroad committee that meets with the railroad, and we haven't done that in a while, and we need to probably do that before too much longer here, where we talk about these issues. But the reality is, the mayor pointed out, we have zero power. When it comes to the railroad, there's not a lot that we can do. We do want to know these issues because we can communicate those issues, and anytime we get that, we do communicate it. I will personally reach out to the railroad this week and express your concerns about this particular crossing. They've heard it before. I use this roadway on many occasions to get to my home. I've sat there probably with you for at least 45 minutes on occasion, and it is very frustrating for everybody. But, you know, our power at this level is not what we would certainly like it to be when it deals with the railroad. And my apologies for that, but that's just the stark realities of what we have.
And I will just add that it's critical that everybody that hits that same situation calls the number on that sign with that crossing number because it is logged and it is followed up on, and maybe they'll get the hint, and I just don't think many people do it. You know, it's probably myself, maybe you and Mr. Reynolds. So we need a lot more participation on that front. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. The last item that I think I'd like to address is the concept of a bridge or a tunnel across the railroad tracks. That is not something that the city has investigated with this feasibility report as part of this project. I would say that it would be more than delaying a year if we were going to review that to make these improvements. More than likely, that would be a two-to-five-year process to get through the railroad, not only to work under the railroad tracks and reconstruct it, but also working with MinDOT to get under the bridge and looking at the supports for that. Not to say that the concept in theory wouldn't work. It would be very expensive and I would think be more than that $1 million that you potentially threw out there as well, and a very lengthy process. And in reality, this roadway, based on our recommendations, it is failing and it needs to be addressed. I will speak for our public work staff that patching this roadway is very difficult, given the high speed and high volume of traffic along the area, and those patches continue to fall apart as well, which I'm sure you've noticed. That is not something that the city has investigated at this point.
Turnaround locations?
Thank you very much. Yeah, that is another note. The driveways are difficult because you're right, if people get stuck in the tracks, they want to turn around in the roadway. The city would be limited in the amount of right-of-way that we have available to construct those turnarounds. If private property owners were willing to work with the city to allow those improvements to go on private property, I think that would be something the city would certainly be open to considering, that would make, improve the situation with cars going through people's properties and going behind different businesses and whatnot. So I think that's something certainly that the city staff can talk with property owners with, that potentially it could be a partnership that could make sense. But I think that's something we haven't explored at this point either, but we can certainly follow up.
I'm pretty confident saying that if we, it would be cost prohibitive to put it underneath the railroad tracks, but even if we did, I'm pretty confident saying that the railroad would require us from that point forward to own that crossing and any improvements that the railroad track itself would need indefinitely. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this topic to the city council? It's a public hearing, please come forward and we'd love to hear your comments. Second call, anybody that would like to speak on this topic? Council, I'm seeing none. What's the wishes? Mr. Lara?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
By Mr. Lara, and second by Ms. Contreras. Discussion on the motion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. What's the wishes of the council? Mr. Whiting?
I make a motion to have a resolution, our 2024 Tag 136 ordering improvements and preparations of plans and specifications for the 2025 Stagecoach Road Improvements Project, CIF 25 Tag 001, and accept a proposal from WSB for final design.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Contreras is seconding. Discussion? Mr. Lara?
So, quick discussion on it is, when approving this, let's, I would like the city to make a good effort to let the property owners make a, to propose if they're willing to release any property for turnarounds and give them a good faith effort to provide those opportunities for us, so.
Thank you, Ms. Lara. I was going to ask the motion maker and seconder to incorporate that into their motion to direct staff to pursue them possibilities. staff to pursue them possibilities and bring them back with their findings.
Well, I would add that, I would wonder if that would be a cost to, added cost to the property.
Well, we don't know.
Right, so...
We can certainly find out.
Yeah, we can ask, sure, absolutely.
Motion maker and the seconder?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Only one discussion, maybe we do change our billboard sign and put a real big billboard about that crossing at the railroad tracks and have a digital timer. Did you mention the digital timer? It's not a bad idea.
A lot of people utilize the sign and call, they might get the hint.
Yeah.
What is the wait time?
I think it's like 15, 20 minutes, but that's state statute, and they don't recognize that because they're federal.
It's 20 minutes, I think, state and 30 minutes federal, if I recall.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Appreciate your comments, sir. Item 9B, public hearing for the 2025 Full Depth Pavement Reconstruction Project.
Make a motion.
Ms. Contreras?
I make a motion to open a public hearing.
Sir, a second? Mr. Delaney? Records keeper, good. Okay. Discussion on a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Public hearing is open. Mr. Jordan?
Counsel, this public hearing is for the city's 2025 Full Depth Pavement Reconstruction Project. Again, this is the first of two public hearings for this project, known as the improvement hearing. The proposed project location and background is on the very east end of town. The roadways include the first area, which we'll call Area A, which includes McGuire Court and McGuire Circle. I'll step between these two projects and give each of you a little bit of background. Back earlier this summer, in May, the city sent out surveys to the property owners regarding this project. Those surveys were targeted to identify if property owners wanted the city to evaluate whether we should construct sanitary sewer and water main improvements with this project. All of these properties are on private wells and septics, meaning that they own their private systems, there are no public utilities available to these property owners. Since the city was proposing a full-depth pavement reconstruction project, we wanted to ensure that we didn't miss the step of putting public utilities in if the property owners desired to have those connections to the city sewer system. Based on the surveys that we got back from property owners, there was a desire for the city to evaluate what the costs would be to the property owners if we did construct public sanitary sewer and water main systems. Between the summer and fall, we evaluated what those costs would be, and in October, we sent out a second survey to property owners with the cost of what those systems would be. Based on the feedback that we got from property owners, there was not a desire to include public sanitary sewer and water main with this improvement project, so the city completed a feasibility report which estimated just reconstructing the roadway, not including utilities. A little bit of background before that, this project was actually included in the 2023 adopted capital improvement plan. That project was proposed as a mill and overlay. After further evaluations of the pavement condition, staff determined at this time that the roadway was not a candidate for a mill and overlay, and it dictated that a full-depth reconstruction of the roadway was the appropriate solution. Now, reasons for that is, in certain areas, there wasn't enough asphalt to be able to mill and overlay, essentially strip off a top layer of asphalt and repave it. If we did that, we'd be getting into the actual roadway surface itself. And secondly, the pavement, once it gets beyond a certain approach, the mill and overlay isn't as successful. You can repave the roadway, you don't get the same life out of that mill and overlay, you'll start to see the same deterioration and cracking reflect right back into the top surface of asphalt. So essentially, you'd be throwing away money for not the value that you'd receive out of it. So we made the decision from that in '23 to move forward in '24 with a full-depth reconstruction of the roadway, which puts the project from a condition where the project is funded fully out of property taxes and mill and overlay, to one that is a candidate for special assessments. The second area is what we'll call Area B, that's on Sunset Court. Again, city staff sent the same survey back in the summer of 2023, or '24, I'm sorry. We received a strong desire not to evaluate what the sewer and water system is. So the city did not evaluate what those costs would actually be to extend sewer and water systems to Sunset Court. So essentially, this project is, again, just a pavement reconstruction project. Again, this was very similar to the Area A, where it was included originally in 2023 for a mill and overlay, based on evaluation of the roadway condition. From that, we determined that it was not a candidate for a mill and overlay, and it dictated a full-depth reclamation. This is Area A, this is the McGuire Court and McGuire Circle area. The existing conditions of the roadway, currently it's a 28-foot-wide bituminous roadway with rolling hills and drainage ditches on both sides of the road, so again, no curb and gutter in this area. Again, we evaluated the lateral and sewer water systems, which aren't existing, as the property owners maintain their own wells and septic systems. Originally, this roadway was reconstructed in 1999, and the asphalt has deteriorated significantly since then. The proposed improvements of the project is essentially a full-depth reclamation, maintaining the same width of the roadway, 28 feet. The feasibility report did include addition of two-foot aggregate shoulders along the roadway, and the reason for that is it improves drainage by not having topsoil basically right along the roadway, and it provides a place for our public work staff to be able to plow the roadway without tearing up grass along the roadway, it provides that two-foot buffer. The project would include four inches of asphalt, over eight inches of reclaimed base, and again, no sewer, water, or lighting systems are proposed for this project. Area B, a little bit different, this is Sunset Court, it's essentially the same roadway, 28-feet-wide bituminous roadway with aggregate shoulders and ditches on the both sides. Again, sewer and water systems are not proposed, and they are not existing in this area, as property owners are served by private wells and septics. Sunset Court was constructed in 1992, and the roadway, again, has deteriorated since then. The proposed improvements include reconstructing that surface to 28 feet wide with two-foot aggregate shoulders, four inches of asphalt on top of the eight inches of reclaim, and again, no sewer and water improvements are proposed with this project. Here's a few pictures of what the proposed improvements would look like, again, reclaiming the roadway, grinding up that asphalt with the underlying base, repaving the roadway, and then adding the two-foot gravel shoulders along the sides. Restoration, very similar to the first project, if property owners had concrete driveways, they would receive a concrete driveway to tie into the existing roadway, and same if they had an asphalt driveway. Disturbed areas would be restored with topsoil and seed. If property owners did have irrigation systems, we would re-sod the areas that are disturbed because those irrigation systems provide a better chance for that sod to take. If we would just place sod in areas where they don't have irrigation systems that can be constantly watered, that's where we experience a lot of failures in trying to get that sod to establish, so that's why we propose seed and mulch. The proposed cost of the projects, the total estimated project cost is $405,858. This project is a little different from the Stagecoach Road, because all of the costs with this project are what we call assessable, so based on the city's policy, you can see the special assessments are a higher portion of what that total project cost is. Based on the city's special assessment policy, each project area will be assessed on the actual cost of the street improvements. Again, we'll determine those costs based on actual construction costs after the project is completed. A summary, 30% of the assessable costs would be used to determine what the total assessable amount is. For both Areas A and B, we're proposing to assess on a per-lot basis. Now, again, this is different from the Stagecoach Road improvements, because these are single-family areas, a lot of the lots are very similar in size and nature, they get the same benefit of the roadway as a residential property. So whether the lot is two acres versus 2.2 acres, they would receive the same assessment because it's on a per-lot basis. Essentially, what that is, is you divide, you take the, an assessment rate is determined by calculating, by dividing 30% of the total assessable street improvements by the total number of assessable lots. Now, again, that final assessment will be considered at the second public hearing, which is known as the assessment hearing, in November '25. And on the right, you can see the preliminary assessment rate table. The Area A assessments would be proposed at $6,539 per lot, and Area B is $6,183 per lot. Now, the reasons for those difference in cost is the lot sizes vary between Areas A and B, so you get a slightly different assessment rate. And again, those assessment ones are preliminary, based on an engineer's estimate at this time, and those would be calculated based on the final cost. Here is the assessment map. The areas bordered in red are those that receive the benefit from the roadways and are included in the assessment roll. Area A is the McGuire Courts and Circle, those are on the north, are the top side of the screen, and Area B is Sunset Court. The city did hold a neighborhood meeting last week. We received comments which are included as part of the packet and on your dais. We had seven residents attend the neighborhood meeting. Five of them were representing the Sunset, or the McGuire Streets, Area A, and two property owners were representing the Sunset Court area. A copy of those comments that were shared at the meeting are available for your viewing. From that, the city council will hold the public hearing tonight, and the ask that we, staff would be requesting is authorizing the project and ordering preparations and plans and specifications. Again, that resolution requires a four-fifths vote, because this is a city council-initiated special assessment project. From that, if the council does order the project, we would begin designing immediately from that standpoint, where we'd be able to bring the project back to the council to approve plans and specifications in January of '25. Then we'd go to public bidding, which we would bring back a contract for award in February and start construction in the spring. This project should not take very long. I do want to note that we would include this project in the city's larger mill and overlay project by the same contractor. Benefits of that is, we would receive favorable bids, because we'd have the same contractor working throughout the city, so rather than just having a small contract, where you'd have less quantities, more mobilization costs to bring a contractor just to the neighborhood, we'd have the same contractor that's building about four miles of mill and overlay streets, a paving contractor throughout the city. So we're hoping to take advantage of a good bidding window and including a larger project to get better cost efficiencies. Then with that, we don't know when the project would actually take place for construction. I would envision this would be about a three-to-four-week project, given that there's no curb and gutter, and it's simply repaving the roadway. So, we'll fit it in within any of that paving window through the construction season in 2025. Once the project is substantially complete, we'll be able to, again, declare those costs and call the special assessment hearing, which the council would hold in November of '25. Potentially, if the project gets done sooner, we can move that assessment hearing up, even in the summer or early fall, and what that would do is it'd allow property owners the chance to budget for the assessments, potentially make additional payments in '25 before they go on their tax rolls in 2026, and then again, the city would certify those taxes at the end of the year in 2025. So with that, we would ask the council to hold the public hearing, and I can stand for questions.
Questions of staff? Mr. Whiting?
A couple of questions here. First, it looks like these water and sewer, wells and septics are around 30 years or so, is that correct, roughly?
Roughly, yes, I would say, depending on when the home was built. Most of the homes are either built in the Sunset area, in the early to mid-'90s. The McGuire area potentially could be earlier than that, where they'd have older septic systems.
Okay. What is our current city policy when we do reconstructions for adding back the sewer and water?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council, that's a really good question. The city's special assessment policy is, if there are no sewer and water existing in the area, property owners would pay 100% of those costs. So that's where, when we shared the cost with the property owners, the city doesn't pay for those costs, it's borne directly by the property owner, where the assessments are significantly higher than where it would be if there was any cost sharing by the city. Those assessments, based on my recollection, were in about the $50,000 range for sewer and $50,000 for water, so they were very significant costs to install those utilities.
Is the policy though to add it, or is it to, the policy to, is it?
Uh, so...
Case by case.
Yeah, so there's no policy specifically of when the city would construct those utilities. These properties are within the MUSA, which is the municipal urban surface boundary, which means they're eligible to receive sewer and water. However, staff didn't want to take the approach where we were gonna build sewer and water systems where private septics and wells were in a condition that could be maintained by the property owners. If you can recall, we had a project on Maris and Hanson Street a few years ago, where we had failing septic systems, where if the city didn't take action, we could be experiencing significant environmental issues, and the property owners could have issues as well for their properties, so we took that approach to install those utilities.
I do recall that project, and that's why I'm wondering, these are 30-year-old septics, and so in 10 to 15 years, when these septics start failing, and these property owners start screaming that they want sewer and water now, they'll be waiting. That's my concern.
Yeah, you're right about that, which is why we wanted to get the feedback from the property owners well in advance, so they could evaluate the condition of their current systems before making that decision. I would also say that, at this point, the city has evaluated what it would take to bring sewer and waters to those property owners, where we have a pretty good idea of how we would build it and what the cost of those improvements would be. So we've done a little bit of that lake work in the event that it needs to happen at some point in the future. We also wanted to time up the utilities with the street reconstruction. We wanted to avoid the scenario where five years from now, we just repaved a road where property owners had assessments for a street, and now we have to rebuild that street, just to put utilities in the ground.
If I can continue. Again, I'm gonna ask the soil conditions question. Any concerns there?
We did take borings along the roadway as well. There is an area where it's pretty sandy, which we're anticipating that the roadway can be reconstructed in a suitable condition, where we won't have to do a lot of subgrade excavation, which will also reduce the cost of those assessments. We've included estimates for if we do need to do that soil correction, so hopefully, if we don't encounter that based on the actual conditions throughout the roadway and not the areas where we spot-checked, that we can bring some of those costs down to.
And there were some concerns on the letter here on the table about the core drillings and the original construction of that road. Was that built by the developer, or was that built by the city?
Yeah, I believe that was in relation to Sunset Court, which is Area B, that was built by a developer. There was areas and portions of the street where there was about two and a half to three inches of asphalt, which is under what we would typically exceed for a typical residential area.
So that happens from time to time with developers, if we're not out there watching them all the time, but it doesn't happen typically in a city project, is that correct? You gotta be out there watching them all the time.
I would say yes. I mean, we've got different controls, I can't speak to 1992, what our current practice, what our practices were at that, at that point, I don't want to throw someone under the bus that was here at that time. Potentially, it could be that either the asphalt eroded or wore away at the surface and that decreased the pavement depth, or it was constructed substandard conditions.
Thank you.
Well, not necessarily substandard, but to a standard that's different
Sure.
than compared to today's standard.
Thank you for that correction, yes.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Lara?
Alex, are residents given an estimate of what the project, what they would be assessed at, so they can kind of get a head start in planning?
Thank you, Councilmember Lara, yes. When the invitation to the public hearing was mailed to property owners, we did include what that proposed assessment was. They also had access to the feasibility report, which the city prepared, which detailed the total project costs and those improvements.
Thank you.
Questions of staff? I wrote down, I'm a little bit confused, because you were talking about mill and overlay by using contractors that are in the area for a cost savings, but at the beginning, we were talking about they're beyond a mill and overlay, and it's a full-depth reconstruction. Correct me where, so I understand.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I apologize if I was confusing with that. I meant that the city has a mill and overlay project that's gonna take place in 2025 in other areas of the city. When the city bids out that contract, we'll include this project in that overall scope of that mill and overlay project, where it will be a different type of reconstruction, because we'll be reclaiming the roadway, but that's the only real difference, is that we'll be reclaiming it, so they'll have to bring in a different machine, but at the same time, we'll have the same paving equipment, same paving contractors, where we'll receive cost efficiencies, because there's a larger tonnage of asphalt that's spread over the city versus just a smaller amount tied to this specific project.
And what was the condition of the base underneath these roads currently?
The condition of the base, there is sufficient base under the roadway. It's hard to really determine what that condition is until we strip the asphalt off to know what that is, but based on the sampling that we took, it was built with standard aggregate materials that we would typically see at a sufficient depth.
Okay, so under a full-depth reconstruction, are we taking that out and putting eight inches of new stuff in?
Yeah, good question. This is, a full-depth reclamation would mean that we would combine the existing asphalt with the existing base to generate a new material. Now, that base is, really, it's built to a standard that's a MINDOT specification for a reclaim. That base, then, we would strip off the top layer of it to be able to put enough asphalt back in, that would be the recommended design of four inches, so we'd get the same amount of base below the roadway. If we do encounter an area where we have a thinner layer of aggregate, what the city would do is we would strip that aggregate off, dig the ground deeper below that existing roadway, and then put enough aggregate back in. And we've included estimates about a quarter of the roadway where we assume we might need to do that.
And that's included in your estimates?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Any other questions of staff? All right, this is a public hearing, if you're here for this item, now would be the time for your comments. How many are here for this item? Okay, so we've got quite a few, so we're gonna limit the time for each speaker to four minutes, to aid so everybody has the opportunity to address this. If somebody else makes a comment that you agree with, we're already gonna hear it, you might be able to get all your comments heard if you accept the fact that we've already heard it from somebody else and wrote down our notes, so... So who would like to be the first speaker tonight? Step on up and welcome, and we'd love to have your comments. Do we need names and addresses for records?
Yes, sir.
Name and address for the record, please. And you can go ahead and grab that microphone and pull it. It's, the base is kind of heavy, but.
My name is Mario Graber. I live on Sunset Court. I don't disagree with anything he said as far as the road conditions and the road needing to be replaced. My main issue is that there's never been maintenance performed on this road. So I don't see how the assessment is fair based off of that. He talked about the mill and overlay. That core drill was not done until fall of 2023. Why was this not done years ago? And, you know, why was there never any mill and overlay to make this road last much longer is my, you know, main concern. And that's, that's the frustrating part about it. And if the asphalt, which the city engineer had mentioned last time, if the asphalt was too thin to do a mill and overlay, why was that not caught by a city inspector? We rely on the inspectors to basically make sure that whether it's our house or roads or whatever the case is, is built properly, you know? So that's, that's my main issue with this.
Okay, well, we appreciate your comments.
Oh, one other thing, the, just speaking with the other people in my neighborhood, the two-foot shoulder, nobody in our neighborhood wants that. They have very well-maintained lawns. They have irrigation systems. Many of them are done professionally. And we've taken some pictures of the next road over and just the overgrowth of grass and just how sloppy it looks. Again, our yards are very well-maintained, and we just don't want that look and tearing into the irrigation systems and affecting anything that we have.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. Let me, did you want to go ahead and address them, Mr.?
Mr. Mayor, however you'd like to do it, I can certainly address comments as we receive them.
I think we might get different comments. We might want to have you just address each one.
Okay, that sounds good. So I'll take them in order. The first comment was regarding maintenance on the roadway. On Sunset Court, the city has done some maintenance. We performed a seal coat in the year 2010, and we've also patched certain areas of the roadway where we've needed patches. So I would say the statement is inaccurate in the fact that the city has done maintenance on the roadway. However, we haven't done that mill and overlay. Not every roadway is the same. Not every roadway deteriorates at the same rate and the same condition, which is, which is why a mill and overlay was never completed. It was not, the roadway essentially deteriorated by the point that we established that it needed to be repaired and a mill and overlay wasn't appropriate. There was comments regarding the core drilling done in 2023 to identify the condition. While that is the case that we did the core drilling after we made the determination that a mill and overlay wasn't appropriate, that core drill is just a portion of what makes that determination. We can look at the surface distresses of the pavement to determine what the condition is, to determine whether it's a candidate for a mill and overlay or a full-depth reclamation. So we didn't need to do those core drills to determine whether it should be overlaid or if it was beyond that point. The next comment was regarding the asphalt too thin. I believe we talked about that potentially in the public hearing. Whether it was done at a standard at that time or not caught by an inspector, the reality is it was built in 1992, and here we are with the condition of the roadway itself. And then lastly, the two-foot aggregate shoulder, that is certainly something that we heard in the neighborhood meeting feedback and also comments that we received after that neighborhood meeting. The challenge that we'd have with the, with the not having the gravel shoulder is potentially we could be disturbing those lawns when we do plow the roadways. If property owners didn't, and there was some consensus to not having the aggregate shoulders, we can certainly talk with our Public Works Department to determine how best we could plow those roadways while avoiding damage to the yards and lawn systems. Also, there was mention on irrigation. If irrigation was damaged during construction, we would be repairing those irrigation systems with the project as well. Irrigation systems are permitted within the right-of-way. However, they're the responsibility of the property owner to own and maintain. So that would be part of the project cost to replace those systems. So I would say there is certainly some flexibility that we could have regarding the aggregate shoulder. It's city standard for rural roadways to include that, given that these are lower-speed, lower-volume roadways. Potentially, it could be an option to deviate from that standard. I do want to point out to recent projects that we completed along Wood Duck Trail east of County Road 17 that are very similar in nature, they're rural roadways, residential lots, that we did include those aggregate shoulders, and that's where some of these pictures came from, from previous projects. Over time, those gravel shoulders do fill in with grass and seed that probably look about the same as what they look out there right now. But at the same time, that's certainly something that we can review further with property owners.
So let me, let me ask a question. The road that's currently there, what's the right-of-way width? And is that space two feet beside the road? Is that city right-of-way?
Yeah, very good question. Typically, city right-of-way width is 60 feet. Where we have 30 feet with the roadways, these roadways are 28 feet. So there's a portion of the right-of-way that's technically city property that's outside of property owner, outside of private properties that the city owns. However, property owners have rights to it. They can construct their driveways within that right-of-way. They can, they have, they have to maintain the grass within that area based on the city policy, and also irrigation systems are permitted. I can verify that 60 feet. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I would assume it's very close to that for both neighborhoods.
But the gravel shoulders would not be on private property. It'd be on the road right-of-way.
They'd be within the right-of-way, that's correct.
And then I just wanted to make sure I got this correct. For everybody that's going to speak on this, the city's assessment policy, the current assessment policy has been in place at least 20-some years because it's been the same since I've been here. And I know sometimes it doesn't seem fair, but you got to look at it from the reverse perspective. These roadways are pretty much utilized just by these properties. And yet, 70% of the project is going to be paid for by the rest of the taxpayers of Shakopee, properties that never travel these roads. My property for example. But then on the opposite side, when Counselor Whiting and myself had our roads reconstructed in front of our homes, we paid the assessment and everybody drives on our roads. The whole city utilizes them all the time. So the policy is there to, to be fair across the board regardless of whether it's a road that's traveled by the community daily or if it's a more of a secluded area like this for just them properties. I just wanted to throw that out there. Is that, is that correct that that policy has been around that long?
That's correct, sir.
All right. Thank you, Jordan. Ma'am, can you state your name and address for the record, please? And we'd love to hear your comments.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Post, and I moved into Riverview Estates in 1976.
Can you grab that microphone and just pull it closer to you? It's heavy, but it'll move. Just pull it toward you. There you go.
Hi, Charlotte Post. I moved in there in 1976 before there was a blacktop road. It was installed in 75, and I moved in in 76, so it was done simultaneously. I've been there for 48 years. And the first thing I want to say is that two-foot gravel stuff is a no for lots one through 15. We do not want that. We have really nice grass that grows up to the tar, and they keep it mowed very lovely. No problem with that, so that's out. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is you mentioned about septic and sewer and stuff. When I moved in there, I had septic, distribution tank, drain field put into my property. Okay, the other traffic that's on Maguire Circle is FedEx, UPS, trash. Okay, and people coming in my driveway, making the turnaround and leaving crushed my PVC piping. So therefore, it wasn't my septic tank that failed after 42 years, because this was 2016 or 2018, that happened six years ago, whatever the hell, 2018 it'd be. It wasn't my septic tank that failed after 40 years. It wasn't the distribution tank. It was my PVC piping that got crushed. So I had to put a new drain field, which I did, according to people. It cost me $18,000. So why would I want to pay the city $55,000 for sewer? If you want a legitimate reason, that's what they wanted for sewer only, no water. And that's not hooked up to my house. And my septic system now is three times or four times greater than what it was when I moved in. I'm the only one there half the time. My kids all live in other states. There is, we have no issue with that. And the other people I've talked to, I can tell you what years theirs was put in or upgraded or changed. I have seven lines of 40-foot of drain field out there.
Ma'am, this, this project will not include sewer and water.
Yep, that's, so that's off the table. But the questions you've been asking, concerned with that they were 40 years old, who has a problem, who don't? Yes.
It'll come up in a few years.
Okay. Then I would like to, we received the letters in the mail that he was talking about, and one of my neighbors that's over there in Lot 15 sent this letter out to us in the neighborhood dated October 9th, speaking on behalf of theirs. This is from Laura, speaking about her husband. She asked the city engineer these questions about our property and easements. Written in the email, this is the city engineer, confirmed that the roadwork isn't an assessment to us. They consider it a standard maintenance. He also asked about the curb and the gutter, which came out in a second memo to us, asked if we had water in our basements. And we do not have any irrigation in Maguire Circle either, which they do have on, I guess over there. I'm not familiar with that. And anyway, he also said there that they didn't want to explore any of these issues because they were considering us rural. And a letter was sent to you, and I don't know if anybody here had read it, but it's to the city council members, and it's written by the people that are in Lot 1. In both these two lots that I'm referring to, the first lot, when you enter Maguire Circle, one's on the north side, one's on the south side. So Lot 15 is the first person I referred to that talked to the engineer that said we would not have assessments of this. And Lot 1 is this letter that I'm going to read to you right now. And she's writing the letter, and this is her letter to you. "We're writing to bring to your attention the urgent need for road repairs in Maguire Circle where we reside at 8550 Maguire. The condition of the road has significantly deteriorated, making it unsafe for our children to ride their bikes or rollerblader, play basketball out there. And it's deteriorated in the last three years to this degree. It wasn't this bad five years ago, and it wasn't this bad seven years ago. It's been the last three years. And whoever's been plowing the streets lately, take a look at the curb that's out there on Mullenhart Road coming into Maguire and tell me what's left of it." And then it says here, she calls them courts, but one's a circle and one's a court. Okay, Maguire Circle, Maguire Court have not been touched since 1999. City engineers have suggested the road should be resurfaced within seven years of original construction and again several years later. This pales in comparison to how other cities are maintaining their roads such as Apple Valley. Their resurfaces theirs every two to three years. Additionally, the city Shakopee has been aware of the conditions of Maguire Circle, Maguire Court for several years. They were included in former improvement projects that had been slated for over a year ago as outlined in a construction corner of a spring 2023 hometown messenger letter, which I have here, and it was first brought up to you.
Ma'am, you've got about a minute and a half left.
Yeah, well, I'm speaking for three families. I beg your pardon.
They have to be in person to take their time.
It's here, "The former project was not intended to require full reconstruction on the road at that time. Given the city has not maintained the road in all of 25 years, the cost of the repairs should not be assessed just to the homeowners. Additionally, we request that easement be maintained. Neighborhood is prone to dumping garbage on our properties, and deterioration of easements is assumed to only increase its terrible behavior. Anyway, thank you for your attention. Critical reconstruction of Maguire Circle, Maguire Court is the city should take some more responsibility for neglect in assessing the homeowners."
Thank you.
Maguire Circle has had, I don't know what it's called, where you put black tar in the hole and white tape across it. That is the only thing that has been done on Maguire Circle and Maguire Court in the last 10 years.
Okay, now, while we're wrapping your time up, did you say 76 is when it was blacktopped?
Yes, 70, it could have been 75, the fall of 75 or else early 76.
And it was never blacktopped after that?
No.
A pretty good.
Wait a minute, yeah, we, yes, 1999. They came through and they gave us an easement in 1999. I have a copy of that if you'd like to see it in my.
And then the other question I had is what, for that two feet, so they don't tear up grass, what would you propose there? Concrete strip?
No.
A blacktop? Just the way it is right now? Show the picture. We saw the picture. We saw the picture. I'm just asking if there would be an alternative that would, that you would be satisfied with.
I personally say no, and I would probably speak for the other 11, but we have three of them here. You can ask them.
All right, thank you so much.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, I can address some of the comments that weren't already addressed pertaining to the project, the septic system, I think, that provided a little bit more information to the council regarding conditions. There was comments about some of the information that was included in the city's surveys that were sent out. We did ask questions about, do you have drainage issues in your property? Do you experience drainage in your house? We typically send out that information to try to get feedback from the property owners to ensure if there's improvements that we can make in the project. We've identified those earlier before we begin the design. There was questions about curb and gutter. If curb and gutter was introduced along this roadway, it'd be 100% assessed to property owners. Given the fact that there's no utilities along the roadway, we made the determination that we would maintain a rural roadway. Otherwise, if the utilities would come in, we'd have to tear up that curb basically to install those utilities. If there's no mere irrigation systems in Maguire, we'll, if that's the case, we'll verify that, and then there shouldn't be any impacts, which is good news. There was questions about maintenance on Maguire. Maguire was paved in 1999. Our maintenance record shows that we did seal coat the roadway in 2010, and then we did additional crack sealing in 2013. So again, that was the extent of the maintenance that was done in the life of the roadway after it was paved. Then there was comments about notice that this was included in the construction corner in the spring of 2023. That was, again, based on the fact that it was included in the 2023 CIP. That was kind of an update to property owners for beware of construction that could be happening. After that was published in that spring, that's when staff made the decision that it wasn't a candidate for a mill and overlay, and we removed that project from the 2023 CIP.
And then lastly, 100% of the assessments to the property owners, if I'm not mistaken, 70% of this project cost is falling on residents that don't live in this area.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
So our standard policy is applying. Okay. Ma'am, your name and address, please?
I'm Carol Cannitz, 8563 Maguire Circle.
Thanks for coming and sharing your comments tonight.
Okay, thank you. A comment that was made by Mr. Gordon.
Jordan, yeah.
About there being ditches. It isn't, I don't have a ditch at all. My, my grasses come straight to the road. I do have a swale in my front yard, and it's about 25 feet from the road with a culvert under my driveway. We don't have any problems with standing water. We can have the heaviest rains, the melting snow. There's only been one year where we had water, but it dissipated very quickly. So our drainage is very good. We've had our septic systems examined on schedule, our tanks pumped, and there has never been any unusual abnormalities at all to the drainage field or the tank. In fact, we put in a much bigger tank and a bigger drain field when we moved in. The, the having of gravel, I think the plows would just push that stone onto the lawns because our lawn is right there. And we'd have nothing but weeds come up for, for all these years since we've been there in 1985. We've never needed gravel. We've, the road, when, when the water does come off of it, soaks immediately into the grass. We've never had a problem. So I, I just wanted to mention those few things.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I want to remember that sewer and water is not part of this. I didn't mention that so that folks could hear it. And then we did hear the comment about the gravel, so we don't need to hear.
Right.
And, and staff is going to take a look at the gravel issue, but, uh, in regards to sewage conditions, that's not part of this project?
Right, I, I understand that, but, but Mr. Whiting thinks maybe in five years it could happen. But from the sound of what it would cost us to have sewer and water come in is far greater than if we had to replace our septic system.
And that's totally understandable, but to, to, to Councilor Whiting's, uh, comments, we hear from people who come and say, why didn't you 10 years ago give us sewer and water when you tore up the street?
Yeah.
So we made that inquiry just to determine what residents wanted.
Okay.
You guys said, no, it's out. So don't come back 10 years from now.
Well, I, I, I have four homes, all on well and septic. One of them, we did ask for sewer to come in. We definitely did, uh, because we were on clay soil. But this is one of the best soils of, of all four homes that we've ever had with regard to drainage.
Our city engineer is, is hoping you're right.
Okay, thank you.
Any, and if you could let us know your name and address for the record, please?
And thank you for listening. My name is Ladonna Cleveland. I'm at 8624 Maguire Court. And, um, a, a couple of things. I, I don't want to reiterate on the septic, um, issue, but I do want to tell you, sir, um, Mr. Whiting, I think it is, yes, that we take our septic systems very seriously.
Good.
We have them pumped on a regular basis. We have them inspected, and we do take it very seriously. So I just wanted to share that with you. As far as our road project is concerned, I am concerned also, as other people in our area, that the maintenance of the road has not been what we feel it should have been over the years. I've been there for 34 years. And, um, it, it is an issue that we, we have talked about. And, um, to have it redone now completely and be assessed for it, we just do not approve of that at all.
Can I ask, can I ask if you would be okay with, with 70, 70% of the cost being paid for by other Shakopee residents?
Yes.
You're okay with that?
Mr. Layman, I understand that, and you have shared that several times now tonight, and I appreciate that very, very much, sir. I really, really do. But due to the fact that, um, there was a project not too long ago in the past where, um, it was brought up to you folks about a new construction in their area. And because they had four and five and $600,000 homes, um, you folks did, uh, reevaluate the assessment because you felt that it was going to be a burden to them. And we would like you to consider that same thing for us, if not totally eliminating our assessment, at least reducing it. So we would like you to consider that, if you would, please. The other thing, um, just a, a comment, I know this is reiterating again about the gravel on the side. But what's going to happen there is people who walk their dogs, you know what's going to happen, okay? And the snowplows are gonna ruin the, the, the gravel, just like they sometimes ruin our grass. We have to fix grass every spring, but that's okay. But the gravel would just be a mess. It would be pushed over onto our lawns as well. So I just wanted to share that. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, I can address one of the comments, which was, um, a previous proj-
Sir, could I just say one thing to you? I do not understand half of what you're saying. You are speaking so fast.
Thank you for that feedback. I apologize. Um, Mr. Mayor, the, the question regarding reevaluating assessments, um, there, there was a project, I believe it was five or six years ago, along, uh, Wood Duck Trail, where there are very large lots, and the council received costs for what those assessments would be. And the council at the time made the determination to cap the assessments at a specific amount. I believe it was $12,000. When the feasibility report came in, around $15,000. That was done after the city conducted what's known as a special benefit appraisal to determine if the, um, assessment exceeded the value that would be provided to the properties. Again, those assessments were much higher than these assessments that are being proposed.
Wasn't there sewer hookup in that also?
There were sewer hookups with that project as well. So that is the distinction, I believe, that you were referencing that project. Um, so, uh, it was a project that the council did evaluate at the time. However, it, um, not apples to apples, I would say.
Well, and we didn't waive all their assessments. We, we, with the sewer, uh, extension to them properties, yeah. We lowered it slightly based on the, the, the high groundwater table was a consideration. And what was the other? The, the cost of the sewer addition. But we looked at it as protecting the groundwater that was high in the area.
There's infiltration.
Yep. Doing pretty good for remember that.
Yeah, I remember that one, yeah.
Who's next? Welcome. Name and address for the record and.
My name is Stacy Paul, and I'm on Sunset Court also.
Could you go ahead and pull that a little closer, the microphone?
Stacy Paul on Sunset Court. I just want to, uh, reiterate a couple of things. Hopefully, we can divert from the shoulder, because it doesn't sound like anybody is, um, in favor of that. On our street, yes, we are only seven houses, but our, we don't have a drainage problem, number one, and all our neighbors take pride in how their, the neighborhood looks. So I just, I feel like, as she said, it would be very sloppy, messy. I know the snowplow can destroy the lawn sometimes, but those of us that have that issues have put stakes in the lawn, so that's helped immensely. And the other thing I want to say about the street is that it has really been neglected. Like, there's been a few patches here and there, but that is the extent of it. And for us property owners to pay, you know, the cost of all that, I mean, it's a lot of money, and for something that could have been prevented, I feel. The other thing is that, um, I know there's only seven people on that street. We, we do pay higher property taxes than a lot of people in the neighborhood. But as you mentioned before, we are, we use that street, but guaranteed, I'm paying for a lot of streets that I don't drive on either. So I just want to make that point. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Mr. Whiting?
Alex, can you talk about our street maintenance program? Now, we really didn't get rolling on this program until a few years ago, where we really did an assessment and started coming in and saying, we're doing this, we're doing this, this in five years, we're doing this in 10 years. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Whiting. Um, it's a, a really good comment, and again, it's something that the city has been very proactive in maintenance in the recent years of our roadway system. And, and the reason for that proactive maintenance is to reduce the overall cost of maintaining those roadways. I can tell you what our current practice is, um, which the city would reconstruct or construct a new roadway, and we'll call that year zero. Within the first two or three years, what the city would do is we would typically crack seal and then seal coat a roadway or add Reclamite, which is a new project that we're talking about, um, uh, in the near, near future here. And then after that initial maintenance, typically what the, what we would do is, um, we'd go about till the year 20 and then provide a Millen overlay. Um, and that Millen overlay is designed as a preventative maintenance when the roadway is, the pavement is still in a good condition, such that the base is not susceptible to damage already. So essentially, your pavement damage is limited to your top layer of asphalt. If we can remove and replace that top layer of asphalt, we can protect the underlying base and aggregate and preserve the life of the roadway. Beyond that year 20 standpoint, then typically what we would do within about seven years from that is we would do some patching, um, where the roadway surface might be failing, and after that patch, we would typically do another seal coat and a crack seal. And then typically, our roadways, based on our program right now, is they're designed to last between 35 and 40 years before we would look at a reconstruct. Again, that's our current system right now. Um, we have a lot of roadways on our system that haven't followed that same maintenance plan. Um, these roadways are included. So moving forward for new roadways.
Wait a minute, it's not that they didn't follow that same plan, it's that that same maintenance schedule didn't exist in 1990.
Correct. Thank you for that clarification. Even 10 years ago, that same plan wasn't in place at the time of Millen overlay. Typically, these roadways would have been a candidate for it. That system wasn't in place. Um, so I wanted to point out that clarification, because that is a good question, and that is something that, obviously, these projects don't align with that plan. However, it's the city's priority right now to continue to maintain our roadways to an acceptable condition. And it would be, uh, it would not be worth the value to do a Millen overlay on the roadways, because we would not get the same life out of that overlay. And essentially, you'd be throwing away costs, needing additional maintenance, um, earlier than you typically would see.
Thank you. All right, who, who would like to talk next? Name and address for the record, please?
Dave Bremer, uh, Sunson Court. Um, so I guess regarding the, uh, the Millen overlay, the, the argument that the residents, at least on Sunset Court, have, have had, is that had the Millen overlay been done at the appropriate time, say.
Sir, can you please speak into the mic?
15 years ago, the need for the total reclamation now may not have been needed, right? And so other areas of the city have had, you know, the proper Millen overlay at the appropriate time. Um, and, you know, those, those costs weren't burdened by the, the residents on those streets. Uh, so that's part of the argument here. My question, though, a different question is, on Sunset Court, there are five driveways that are, uh, paver, not, not asphalt and not concrete. So you mentioned about how the like materials would be, uh, put in place after the road was done. Is that true for pavers as well?
Thank you. Yes, that's a very good question. So typically, if there is a brick paver driveway along roadways, what we would do is specify that the contractor is supposed to salvage those brick pavers to the best of their ability, and then reinstall the same pavers. If some of those pavers are damaged, the contractor would need to find like pavers that match your tip, your current condition and reinstall those. So for any of the driveways that are not concrete or asphalt, the pavers would be put back the way they were.
Okay, and, and the final height of the roadbed or the road surface, is that going to be similar or?
That is also a very good question. We haven't evaluated that yet. Um, that would be done with final design. Potentially, if we did raise the roadway elevation a few inches, we could improve the crown of the roadway to provide better drainage, so we don't have water sitting on the roadway. Also, potentially, we could tie into driveways if the driveways are higher or the lots are higher where they have steeper driveways. If we raise the roadway, we could potentially decrease that slope. That's something, again, that would be evaluated in the final design.
I see, okay. So then the taper back on the individual driveways we've done appropriately, if the roadbed was raised?
That's correct. So essentially, each driveway, we would ensure that it matches either the current driveway grade or a grade that meets city code. Um, and in a condition that we have that available space within the right of way to work to make that driveway tie into work, so it's not just two feet beyond, beyond the roadway. If we need to go back further, we have that available space.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for your comments. Mr. Jordan, would raising the roadway, would that impact the plow on, onto the grass at all?
Mr. Mayor, good question. So essentially, if we talk about raising the roadway, we'd be raising the center line crown of that roadway. If you look at some of these pictures, potentially, um, this roadway is pretty much dead flat, which meaning we've lost the crown over time where it's settled in the middle. If we did re-raise that crown, the edges would be potentially a similar elevation to where it is today or existing. Or if we have issues with tying in driveways, we could raise that elevation on the edges too. And then we'd work with property owners to try to get that grading into a condition that isn't something that they couldn't maintain.
I'm trying to find a solution for the gravel. If the gravel's not there, and if you did something different with the road, would it minimize tearing up the grass?
Yeah, and I think, um, one of the property owners, I'm, I'm sorry. I forgot your name, Stacy, I think. Um, she mentioned the, the snowplow stakes, which, um, I think is a great suggestion, especially in the cul-de-sac areas where our public works crews may not be able to exactly follow the edge of the roadway. If property owners are able to put those stakes up, that can certainly help mitigate the potential of going off the roadway and tearing up grass. So I think that's a really good suggestion and a really low-cost partnership that we can work with the property owners to try to maintain that.
And who else would like to address the council on this matter?
I got a bad leg. My name is Dennis Flicks. I live in 8575 Maguire Circle. I've lived there almost 40 years, and I'll make this real quick and clean. Our issue is the assessment. Taxes, five grand plus a year. A letter a couple of days ago with a 7% increase in property tax. I appreciate the change in the city's or the engineering policy to maintain roads differently than they did when they put our road in. But I think the responsibility for, for doing whatever has to be done to our road belongs to the city in this particular situation. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Anybody else? Anybody else want to speak on this matter? I'm seeing none. We appreciate all your comments. Wishes of council, Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded to close public hearing. Discussion on the motion, Mr.? Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. All right, what's the wishes of the council?
Yeah, I just like, I think the property owners probably know this, but just to be sure. And I know the council understands why the assessment amount comes up.
Microphone, please.
I know your council understands why the assessment amount comes up in this hearing, but there will be another hearing at which you'll get notice of, where you'll have the right to make any comments you want on the assessment at that time. So if the council decides to go forward with this project tonight, that does not mean you don't have a, another chance to address the council when it comes time for them to adopt the special assessments. And I thought you might want to know that, so, because that decision is not getting made tonight.
Thank you. That's the city attorney, uh, Jim Thompson. Did you have a comment?
I do have a comment, yes, before we move on, but if you have something you wanted to say. I, I just want to remind folks that, you know, the past practices of roads, uh, you know, we can't change that. We, we want to fix your road. The mayor and, and, and I have been assessed in the past 10 years for our roads. I wasn't happy about paying for it either, but we got a nice new road out of it.
And ours weren't maintained to the current standard because they were older roads too.
Yeah, they, they had to do everything. In fact, even some lead pipes on our street, so, uh, hopefully you don't have that. Um, but I want to also mention that, uh, if this moves forward without the, the gravel on the side, I want you to consider the, the complaints to the, the plow drivers in the city hall when, when they do, uh, happen to hit your grass, because they've actually tried to improve on that with a gravel, uh, uh, edge there. So, uh, if it does move forward with, uh, just grass, I hope you, uh, understand that, that that's not the direction the city wanted to go.
What's the wishes of the council? Mr. Lara?
Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment real quick. Um, I just wanted to say thanks for everyone coming out that made these comments. It's important to hear your feedback. And it clearly shows you guys care about your neighborhoods. So with that, I will make a motion to adopt resolution R2024-135, adopting on November 6th. Oh, that's the wrong one.
137.
R2024-137, ordering improvements and preparation of plans and specifications for the 2025 full-depth pavement restructuring project, CIF 25-001.
Sir, a second to the motion?
Second.
Councilor Contreras, discussion on the motion. Mr. Delaney?
Just wondering, do we need to include the, um, edging that we had talked about, removing that or?
If, if you want to direct in that motion, you could ask the motion makers to, uh, direct staff to look at alternatives, to remove it. What's your pleasure?
I would like to have staff take a look at that. I think pretty much the neighborhood has been consensus that they don't want that, so I would be forced upon them.
Okay. Do you want them to just remove it or look at alternatives, um, or just remove it outright?
Sounds like removal outright seems to be what everybody's asking for, so.
Okay. Let's get a comment from city engineer.
Uh, mayor and council not speaking for our public works director. Um, I see Bill nodding in favor that he could work with it. So from that standpoint, I feel like we can work with the residents and property owners to provide a solution that can work by removing the gravel shoulders.
Mr. Allen?
Yeah, and, and I just want to talk to, to, to all of you just a little bit, and understand that as city staff, we're trying to find a balance. And there are some times where people come and complain about us ripping up their yards with our plows. And, uh, you know, what we found over time is that having a buffer actually helps prevent that. It's not that we were somehow- It's not that we were somehow targeting you or trying to do something or mess up your lawns. That's really the last thing we're really trying to do. But thank you for coming and letting your situation be known. It is a not well-traveled route, and so we think we, with the public works director, has said that we can work with that. And so we will certainly take a look at not having those gravel pieces on the roadways.
And Mr. Reynolds, I would point out that unless you've been in one of these great big giant plow trucks, it's kind of hard to gauge exactly where you are when everything is white in front of you.
Yeah, and the other reality is, is that our goal is to get our drivers plowing the streets as quickly and safely as possible. And, you know, there are a lot of times where people are calling up, why aren't you plowing my street? Well, it's because of this other stuff. And sometimes, we're trying not to harm lawns when it's just not as efficient as far as time concerned. I just hope you understand that we're trying to work that balance there.
Thank you.
Do you want to adjust the motion?
Is it okay for the motion maker and second to remove the gravel edging?
Yes.
Yes.
So discussion on the modified motion.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? So just to recap, the gravel side will be removed. We don't have firm cost. The cost that you were told for assessments is an estimate only. And we'll see what the final cost is in the assessment. It could be lower, and you'll be able to speak to that at the assessment hearing.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one more comment?
Yes.
I will say to the property owners that once we have a contractor selected, we will host another neighborhood meeting where before construction, we will walk through exactly what to expect during construction, also talk about timing for construction, potentially discuss issues like where your garbage bins will go every day, where should you park your vehicles, and all of those things. So this isn't the last time you'll hear from me. More than likely, you'll get a letter probably in March or April, once we have those, once we have that contractor identified. And then construction would commence after you have all of that information.
And when the city engineer told me that, stress levels went up. But I want to tell you that it was one of the easiest and painless processes, and working with the city engineers was great. And they keep the communication open if you have concerns, and everything will go just fine.
And if you do have complaints, you can always give my office a call as well if you feel that the city engineers, people or the contractor are not doing anything that they should be doing. Don't hesitate to reach out to the city administrator or the assistant city administrator, and we'll take a look at it.
What is the timeframe from the time you first come out and dig the road up to the time that it's done?
Is there rain involved? Is there rain?
There's rain.
Is there rain?
I would assume the project would be roughly three to four weeks.
Unless it rains.
Let's get back to the item at hand. Mr. Lara?
Yeah, I'm okay with my motion.
In a second.
Yep.
Discussion?
Nope.
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all for coming. We really appreciate your comments. And when I say you can't fight city hall, you just got your gravel on the side of your road removed.
Make a motion to adjourn to a 10-minute recess?
Second discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in recess for 10 minutes. We are back after a 10-minute council recess, and that takes us to item number 10. Recession for the Economic Development Authority Meeting. Motion would be in order.
Make a motion to move into our Economic Development Authority meeting?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
No.
Discussion, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are in EDA. Here you go.
Thank you. I call to order the Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting for Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. Staff, if you could please make note of the role. Thank you. That was number one. Number two, we're going to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number three, consent business. We have our EDA meeting minutes for June 4th. Anyone have any questions on that? Yes, sir.
Madam President, I'll move the consent agenda.
All second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number four, we have our tax increment financing, TIF District 22, for Eagle Point Estates. And Mr. Kurski, good evening.
Who's with James R. Hill, Brad Aldridge, who's with Confluence, and Greg Drant is here from Shakopee Public Utilities. So between myself and the rest of the people here, hopefully, we'll be able to answer all of your questions. So some of you have seen this project for many years. This gravel pit dates back to the 1970s. There's been tons of litigation over the years. This presentation was done back in 2013. To give you an idea of what the gravel pit looked like back then, there was still a lot of mining going on, and they had the area broken up into different kinds of materials, considering sand and rock. And then this was the proposed reclamation area. So when we say reclamation, they basically brought in fill and compacted it. And through the years, they also built berms up around the gravel pit at the request of the neighbors. There was a lot of discussion over the years on landscaping that. A lot of people actually in the city that I talked to don't even realize there's a gravel pit here because of the large berms that are around it. So you can see over time, this is the berm improvements that were done back in 2013. And then these are the reclamation areas. You'll see a photograph. Most of this area here has been compacted and flattened out. There's still, you'll see in some photographs, some active mining that took place here over the years, and this has become as deep as 70 to 80 feet. So this is the existing berm and reclamation pile section. So the thought was over the years, you can see from this little diagram, that these berms eventually would be used as part of the reclamation for the site, so basically filling it in and grading it out. And then this is, again, a future mining area, the active mining area. This was done in phases. So here is phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, phase five, six, seven, eight. And then eventually, the final phase was the site would get filled in. And this was the proposal back in 2013 to have a commercial corner here, some town homes, and then single-family homes, a small park here. One of the things you'll notice missing from this back in 2013 is stormwater. There's a tremendous amount of stormwater that flows through this area from the surrounding neighborhoods. In fact, I'm working with the engineers and our engineers, some of these plans that you see here were not completely engineered out, and some of these buildings and these lots actually would have been below the emergency overflow and basically would have been flooded. So there is a tremendous amount of water, as I said, flowing through this area. So again, earthwork calculation, if you look, there's 246,000 tons exported in 2013 and 134,500 yards brought into the site. And again, as we go through this, they have been bringing in material over the years to try and fill in some of these areas, and you can see that in the aerial that we'll show you at the end. This was a plan that some of you saw in 2000, which I can say was not well-received by just about anyone, but it was creating the stormwater ponds interconnected, basically ended up over here. This was a business park industrial corner here with some type of office building and then single-family homes. So that kind of leads us today. You can see on this photograph, so here are the reclaimed areas, particularly along 17th Avenue on the corner here and a little bit on the backside. And there's been a lot of development that has occurred over the years. This is the new Valley Crest subdivision. So these are some photographs that we took to give you an idea how big this site is. Give you an idea, I looked the Centennial Lakes, which is sort of what we've tried to model this after in Adina, which was another gravel pit that was a tax increment financing district. It was 125 acres, so this is about 140 acres. So this is a pretty large site. You can see here, these are the new homes, and you can see the depth here, how deep this pit really is. This gives you another really good angle. So these homes literally are kind of on the edge of the pit in this area. And you can see what they have done. These are the berms you see along the road, and they do have reclaimed material piled up over here. This is probably the most extreme area. So this is our city park over here. This is the kind of cliff on the other side of the road. So the deepest part right now is, I think, 70 to 80 feet. So some that were on the council will remember, we did go to the state legislature two sessions in a row. We developed this concept plan with Confluence to get the special legislation done for this. This legislation's been fairly common throughout the region, so the largest gravel pit TIF is in Maple Grove Arbor Lakes. It's hundreds upon hundreds of acres. It's a rolling TIF. So as they bring in additional development there, the most recent one is they did a business park and TIF that, but that entire shopping center, all the hotels, that whole area's been TIF'd, and they actually still have active mining going on behind that, and eventually, that'll be TIF'd out and closed. So using some of those examples, some of the ones from Apple Valley, we were able to get legislation passed by the state modeled on those other TIFs that have been done throughout the state that would allow, just for this site, tax increment financing to do the reclamation, basically flipping the site and some of the public improvements. So if you look at this, this was the original concept plan. This is the plan that you're going to be seeing tonight. So minimum of a $375 million investment. Again, the special legislation from the state. A new 24-acre park. To give you an idea, the park that's in Adina is about 24 acres, so very similar size to Centennial Lakes. 155 roughly single-family homes, 74 detached townhomes, 110 attached townhomes, 534 plus or minus apartments, a grocery store over here on this corner, approximately 100,000 square feet of medical and office space, and 30,000 square feet of retail and restaurants. One of the things that was discussed at the planning commission, most people don't realize because of the berms, this corner here, where the Scott County's already built this intersection for this future road to this corner, it drops between 14 and 17 feet. So very similar to the other side where Lowe's is, you'll actually, from the road, see the roof of the proposed grocery building. That's how much of a grade difference there is on this site. So there's been a tremendous amount of work, engineering work done, both on the city side but also the private side, to actually make the grades in this project work and to actually consolidate the stormwater into a major public feature. The emergency overflow actually comes out here and goes out, so this would be the last kind of ponding necessary in case there's a major water event. And this is kind of the engineer's view of this project. So you can see all of these are public streets except for the alley that runs through these detached townhomes. This would be a newer product that we have not seen in a long time in this community. These are townhomes. We've worked with the designers to make sure that when people are in this park, they're not looking at garages and things. So these are all front doors facing the park area. This is proposed to be a 55-plus age-restricted apartment building. These are two market-rate buildings. There has been some interest in potential medical in these two buildings, and these are the smaller retail spaces. The white space is a proposed location for Shakopee Public Utilities to have a water treatment site. One of the benefits of this site is they do have some wells to the east, and their major well field is over in the ball fields and soccer and football fields. And they've done the analysis, they could bring these pipes through this project so the raw water would be able to get to the site and be treated. The benefit for Spuck's involvement is that, working with their commission, they would provide water to the ponds here, so these will always have water, spring, summer, winter, fall, so that would be a significant feature. This is about 30 to 40 feet deep here, so there is a significant bounce in the water. But Spuck would always keep a base level of water in the lake here. The other big addition you'll see here is a sledding hill that would be part of the park and some other neighborhood features. Brad Aldridge from Confluence will show you some more detailed pictures, renderings that have been done, along with a video of what this project would look like. And then Michaela can dive down into the actual TIF numbers. So people ask, why is this project need TIF? Why is it so expensive? So first, the site needs to be flipped of roughly 4 million cubic yards of fill. So that fill that's there, in order to guarantee the stability of every home pad and building pad, you actually have to turn it all over, recompact it at certain levels of a half foot to a foot at a time, have an engineer there watch that based on that plan to make sure when you buy your house somewhere down the road, you don't have sinking problems. So that would be done in '25, '26. They need to import somewhere between 500,000 and a million cubic yards of new fill. One of the issues, speaking with Rick, is right now, there's not a lot of fill available. So in the past, you could get fill from a project and basically pay to truck it here, or people would truck it here at no cost just to get rid of it. That doesn't exist anymore. There's a lot of projects. The 212 project had really bad soils on the other side of Carver County. They're actually getting rid of that bad soil and bringing in new soil. The 494 project, which is, I think, going forever, has been taking up a huge amount of fill. So one of the busts on the fill cost, the last developer that worked on this came in, it was over $10 million, more than they had anticipated to truck fill in. So it's a very expensive process. The other thing is you have to let the site settle. So for a year to two years, you basically have to let Mother Nature do its course and settle down. One of the issues on this site, there's a lot of sand. Rick from the engineering side said, you know, sand is not a great thing because it tends to settle over time as much as 30%. So you'll have to wait. The proposed water feature would have to be clay-lined because otherwise, it would just drain out because of the amount of sand on this site. So public infrastructure would be constructed in 2028 along with the park. So you wouldn't see actual buildings come up probably until '28, '29, and it's probably a five- to 10-year build-out. So one of the reasons you look on, and Michaela can go into this, that TIF has kind of an extreme number, but based on the economy and interest rates, et cetera, there's a significant amount of risk in this. So the value today of the TIF, present value, is about $23 million. But in talking with the potential lenders on this project, they're discounting even more because they feel this is going to be a long-term project for the community. This isn't going to show up overnight. This is going to be, you know, 2038, we're going to see the project probably finished. So it has a significant risk factor here. And you're talking about $40 to $50 million the developer has to put up front for the public improvements in flipping the site before you're putting a stick in the ground. So there's a long lag time. So you're paying the current tax rate on that property for five, six, seven years before you actually see any of the TIF money. So it's a pretty risky project, and we're talking to a lot of developers that have experience in it. And I think this was the first big step to get the preliminary plat, the PUD concept approved, and the TIF approved, to go back out to them, to get them to buy into the project from the start. Rates are coming down a little bit, and we're hoping to be able to find a developer that has the financial depth, I mean, to come up with the 40 or 50 million they need to get the project going. I will turn this over to Brad if I can get this to work. Do you want the video first?
I need the slides first.
Yeah. Can you know how to get this to go full screen? Can you know how to get this to go full screen?
Full screen. Thank you, Michael. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the public spaces, the public realm, the park space that Michael had talked about previously, and some of the interconnected trails with this project. And I think the unique part about this project really is that lake and the trail that surrounds the lake. It really makes the entire lake accessible to not only this development's residents, but even the residents surrounding. Our staff and our design team and the engineering team were really mindful about creating these connections. It's hard to see the mouse here. But there are really good trail connections to the neighborhood, to the west, to the south, and even to the new commercial area in the northeast. So between the trails and the sidewalks, I think this is really going to fit into the fabric of the existing community, but also this new development. One of the precedents Michael mentioned, Centennial Lakes and Edina is a great precedent. Another one is actually Highland Bridge in St. Paul, the old Ford site, which is similar. It's a little more dense than this, but it really is about creating that public space around the lake and the amenity. And creating that is kind of the focal place for the development. So I'm just going to go through a few renderings here. This is a bird's eye kind of of the entire development, just showing how this will look in transitioning from the commercial and retail areas in that northeast corner where it's busier, to the south and the west, to more single-family, and just how those homes and those streets, kind of the character and the network of those, fit in around this lake. This is another bird's eye view from the south, and just noticing the trail that you can kind of see that circumnavigates the lake and how it kind of stitches the whole neighborhood together. And we'll have a fly-through video of this as well. This is a shot of the park, kind of the main, I guess, you would traditional sort of park element. So there would be a lot of kind of passive space. There would also be some active recreation space with playgrounds and a small gathering building that would be more similar to other parks in Shakopee for the neighbors. Just some views of some of the trail character that we think might be appropriate here. On the left, there's kind of the hammock poles, which are all the rage right now. Definitely native landscaping throughout this as well is something that people in Shakopee have told us that they want. This is showing a pavilion structure on the east side of the lake, kind of near the apartments as well. So just providing a couple of different ways for people to engage with the lake as you walk around the lake, different areas of shade and not shade. This whole development, public space would be accessible, fully accessible. And these are a few sections talking a little bit about kind of the dynamic of how much topography is actually here. It's hard to see that from a plan view. But like Michael talked about, from some of the main roads, this top section is showing how much that would actually drop down to the commercial area. And that lower section is showing one of the key areas of residential development that would be up above the trail. We are showing on the trail the potential for some pedestrian lighting, too. So this trail, which is a little over three-quarters of a mile, which I feel is a really good distance for sort of an after-work walk or a Saturday morning walk with a coffee. This could be lit up. So even, you know, earlier this week, when it was 50 degrees out and got dark at 4:30, people could still walk and enjoy the space. I will go to this fly-through video. So this just is going to kind of walk us around the trail as if we were kind of walking around it and pointing out some key elements, showing how that sledding hill in the winter, if you can imagine, floating down here in the flexible lawn in the summer, the lake properties. And then this was kind of zoom around and show one of the areas for a hammock grove. So again, just trying to provide different ways for people to engage and relax and kind of interact with the community here. The trail, as it zooms through the trees, it's a little jarring, but this is the pavilion that we showed earlier and where that would sit in the landscape. And also note, around the building, we tried to integrate this trail into the fire lane, the emergency services. So it didn't feel like a fire lane, but actually kind of fit into the character of the entire trail. This pedestrian bridge, we think, is really, could be a kind of an iconic part of the development as well. It could be a really neat space for people and a landmark. And this gets into some of that native landscaping and even providing some of these rock outcreppings for people to get down and engage with the water. This is showing the park space and some of those hammock groves, the hillside playgrounds, and even a warming house or shelter, a viewing deck. And this is showing canoes or kayaks in this lake. I think this would be a good beginner lake for that type of activity, and potentially even for paddleboards as well.
What's the depth of that lake? Do we know?
30 to 40 feet. Yeah.
Does that have potential to be stocked? You know, the DNR would have to be involved, but...
I think it would be great lake to be stocked, but that would be another conversation, yeah. We're showing that, you know, that dock as just kind of a sitting seating dock, but that would be a great space to have a kind of, I can learn to fish sort of program.
Somebody else? Someone else is coming up? Go ahead. No question?
No.
There you go.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am here to give a brief overview of tax increment financing, the assumptions of the tax increment financing plan, and would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
So again, a couple of the topics to talk about, just an overview of tax increment financing, how the tool is used, the proposed tax increment financing district number 22, the qualifications as a soils deficiency TIF district pursuant to the special legislation, some of the development assumptions and projected budget authority within the tax increment financing plan, the but four tests that will be considered for creation of the district and the use of tax increment financing, and then consideration of both the process and next steps of the schedule. So tax increment financing is a tool that communities use to facilitate development and redevelopment in areas where it otherwise would not occur. It is a method of capturing that tax-based growth resulting from the new development. There is a fixed term for the capturing of the tax increment revenues, and then the new development capacity that's created within the tax increment district is added to the existing tax base. The taxes, excuse me, the tax increment revenues are generated by that increased property value that's created when that property is developed or redeveloped. Here's one illustration. The current value of the property, whether it's land or building, the taxes generated from that existing value continue to go to the city, county, and school district. The value of the buildings that are created within the tax increment district generate taxes, and those taxes are captured by the tax increment financing district to facilitate the eligible expenses. One other illustration here is you've got the teal area, the base tax and value. The taxes from that land value are captured, excuse me, by the other taxing entities. The gray shaded area, that's the incremental taxes that are captured by the tax increment district to pay for the TIF-eligible improvements. Once the term of the tax increment district is over and the new development has been created, that higher value in taxes from the new development are now included within the general tax, general tax base for all of the taxing entities. There are several different types of tax increment districts that have different criteria for establishment and corresponding terms for collection of the increment. There are five main ones that cities create. And the one that we're looking at, and I'll just say quickly, the first three that are listed, redevelopment, renewal and renovation, and soil deficiency, those are all based on the current conditions of the property prior to the tax increment district being created, subject to meeting certain qualifications with the redevelopment and the renewal and renovation. It's based on current status as blight, substandard buildings. Soil deficiency is really related to poor soils of the site itself. And then the last two, housing and economic development, those are based on the criteria of what's being developed on that site, and there are certain restrictions for that. Again, the soil deficiency is based on the current condition of the soils. The maximum term is 20 years of collection after receipt of first increment for a total of 21 years. We're talking about TIF-eligible. This is a general, a general rule. When we're looking at tax increment financing districts, there are certain improvements that can be financed with those dollars. And typically, it's all of the cost prior to vertical construction. So that can include acquisition, construction of public improvements, soil correction, site grading, site preparation, demolition, and then administrative costs related to the Likewise, there are certain costs that are not considered TIF-eligible, and those are generally public costs that could include projects related to public facilities, city centers, public works. There is a limit on the amount of tax increment that can be used for administrative expenses related to the tax increment district itself. And then tax increment cannot be used on cultural recreational facilities such as parks, communities, centers, and golf courses. So when we're looking at projects, such as the one being proposed within this tax increment district, there are certain costs that can be financed with tax increment and certain costs that would be financed with other sources of funding. There are two general options for financing of tax increment revenues. The more commonly and less risk-related for cities is what's referred to as pay-as-you-go. In this scenario, the developer is responsible for financing 100% of the costs related to that project within the tax increment district. And subject to the terms of TIF agreement between the city and the developer, one or more TIF notes would be issued by the city to the developer. And then the developer is reimbursed over time with available tax increment. So the future reimbursement is based on the generation of taxes, the payment of taxes remitted by, or remitted by the county to the city, and the city providing a portion of those to the developer for the identified TIF-eligible expenses. The other method is upfront and city financing. And this can be done either through an inter-fund loan, using internal funds to finance certain improvements, or through the issuance of bonds. And there are certain restrictions and considerations regarding upfront financing. And there are different security mechanisms that can be in place to mitigate city risk for that type of participation. The project financing for the tax increment district being proposed is pay-as-you-go, in which the developer would finance the costs and then be reimbursed, subject to the receipt and generation of future tax increment dollars. There is a process for establishing a tax increment district. All tax increment districts are created within a project area. The city and EDA have an existing project area, the Minnesota Valley Housing Redevelopment Project Area Number One. And the boundaries are co-terminous with the boundaries of the entire city. So all tax increment districts are, the tax increment district being proposed is created within that existing project area. For, prior to creating a tax increment district, the, there is a process of drafting a tax increment financing plan that contains statutory authority and provisions for which the district's being created. It also includes the budget of estimated total revenues and estimated public costs of the district, the geographic boundaries for which the tax increment revenues would be generated, and then the purpose for which the tax increment district is being created. The last step in the process is the holding of a public hearing, and that's the action before the city tonight. And then, when the timing is right, the request for certification is made to the county, and that makes the tax increment district official and on the county books. The processes that lead up to the holding of a public hearing include the drafting of a TIF plan for review. There is notice to the county and the school district, providing them the draft TIF plan and the opportunity to provide comments, a published hearing notice for the public hearing, and then, as I mentioned, the public hearing by the city council. There is the EDA review. And then the last step after establishment of the tax increment district is working with the developer and considering the terms of what's included within a TIF agreement. And that's where the reimbursement for certain costs and terms of the TIF assistance come into play. So this district is being created as a soils deficiency district, and there is special legislation that was approved that allows the city to create one or more tax increment districts in the proposed tax increment area. The reasoning for, or the conditions that exist for allowing the creation of the soil deficiency district are the unusual terrain or soil deficiencies that are, occur over 70% of the acreage of the district, that require the substantial fill, grading, or other physical preparation prior to use, and that the estimated cost of preparing those or doing the improvements exceeds the fair market value of the land prior to the improvements. There are certain properties, four parcels that were identified within the legislation, that are included within the boundaries of the tax increment district. One item to note is one of these parcels is identified as where the treatment facility would be. So while it's showing within the boundaries of the tax increment district, it's expected that there's not going to be any development that's created on that site. And with, when the consideration of a TIF agreement as next steps is considered, that parcel could be removed from the current There's a lot of language here that, again, further dives into what is considered within the qualifications as a deficiency district, related to the poor soils, existing condition of the, of the properties, and all of which are the findings for which the tax increment district can be created. I went through the TIF-eligible costs of a tax increment district. Because this is special legislation, there are certain restrictions on what the tax increment dollars can be used. And you'll see here, increments can be used only to acquire parcels for which the improvements would occur, to pay for the cost of correcting the soil deficiencies and additional cost of public improvements that are caused by the deficiencies, as well as related administrative expenses of the, of the district. So again, there are general TIF-eligible expenses that are all prior to vertical construction. And because this is a special legislation soils deficiency district, there are further limits on what the tax increment dollars can be used.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So under normal state statute for TIF districts, state TIF laws, they don't allow any tax dollars from the properties in the TIF district to go towards services, police, fire, plow in the streets, these types of things. Does this legislation allow for that to be used for those functions?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the original taxes on the property would be going to those services. It's the increment that would not be going to those services.
Right, but there's no roads to plow there right now.
But, so all these years, you could say that they've been paying taxes and not getting services.
Okay. And then the second question I have is, so the answer is no, you can't use it for services.
And I will clarify, the, and that's, the existing taxes will still remain to pay for the cost of services. From a tax increment standpoint, the use of the tax increment dollars can be for capital expenses, excuse me, capital expenses and not operating expenses. So if we're looking at the cost of additional services and so on, that's not the intended use of tax increment dollars.
Okay, so here's another question. My, my city tax dollars and my property tax, each department, and I'll use the police department as an example, a portion of my taxes go to the police department, who then takes a portion of their budget and puts it into a building fund, an equipment fund, IT fund, a park asset fund, and all these other things. TIF cannot put some of that revenue into any of them funds because they're not paying it through the regular general fund tax?
The, the tax increment revenues that are captured by the tax increment district will be used only to pay for the cost of correcting the conditions that are allowing for designation of the district. And so if there are, if there are certain operating expenses of the city related to this district, those are not funded by tax increment dollars. I'll go on a different tangent, that if there is, say, city capital investment in this site, that you want it through like an inter-fund loan, that you want, there's certain costs that are, would be eligible, financed by the city. The city could retain a percentage of the increment to repay that inter-fund loan for those qualifying tax increment costs, but not necessarily for operating expenses as related to the development within that district. as related to the development within that district.
So none of the dollars from this TIF district can go into the capital improvement fund for future road improvements that may be in this project 20 years from now?
In that scenario, that is correct. The tax increment is paying for the current improvements within the district. And so it's not banking for future use. It's paying for the improvements that are necessary to allow that development that you saw to proceed.
Okay.
Can I add on to that? I'm sorry. Administrative costs up to 10% to manage the TIF. That is part of it.
I was... Sorry, I was referring to the cost of services and other operating expenses. But administrative expenses directly related to monitoring the tax increment district, making payments, other items related specific to whether they're staff or out-of-pocket expenses as specific to admin can be included. I was referring more to if there's capital and... Excuse me, operating expenses, cost of services, other items. Those are not... Would not be included within the tax increment.
Mr. Delaney.
My question is, so we would only... Right now, they're paying $51,000 a year for taxes on that property. So that's all we would get city-wise. Part of that from the city anyways to use towards city services for 20 years.
The... Right, so the total taxes that are paid on the property today, the city's share would be based on the respective tax rate. So if the total property taxes are $51,000, the city's share would be less based on the respective tax rate for the city.
So over the next 20 years, as 900 households go in and we bring on more firemen, policemen, and plow streets, they're capped at our part of that $51,000. We would receive nothing else for those services.
This tax increment district would not, over the life of the district, any of the taxes that are created by the new development are captured by the tax increment district and not included within the general city tax capacity.
So that basically goes out to every other resident. Forty-eight thousand would be picking up that cost of the snow, fire, police. Again, we got a great police department. And we're growing out our fire department. I think we're going to 24/7 model. We're going to actually add on staff. So during that 20-year time period, they would be contributing nothing for that effort.
The... Correct. There is no... However, if you believe in the but-for test, without any tax increment district being created, there would never be any tax base generated on this site. So in 20 years, you would still have the same tax base that you have today. But there would not be... Back to this slide. Back to this slide. Without using the tax increment dollars to facilitate redevelopment on this project site, in 20 years, you'll have that dark green shaded area. And that would still continue to be the same value in 20 years versus if it's capturing the tax increment district. The assumption is but-for the use of the tax increment dollars to facilitate the redevelopment costs on the site and generate the new value. Then at the end of the term of the district, there'll be a much higher tax capacity than to relieve the tax burden of the city as a whole.
Understood. So for two decades, we're not going to fund anything out of that district. We may have other TIFs coming online. And this is not the last TIF the city's going to pursue. So we may have others coming online as we develop south and west. So I'm sorry.
Mr. Whiting, did you have something before?
I just wanted to say that without 20... 21 years, I think it ends up being, we don't add to the budget and funds. But 22 years, we get a windfall. And but-for this TIF district, we have a hole in the ground for the rest of time, which doesn't get developed and doesn't mean... Doesn't grow in tax value.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Madam President, 24 years now. When they come on the tax rolls, we're going to be rebuilding all the streets and all the infrastructure because its life expectancy, as our engineer said, is about 30 years. And there will have been nothing paid into the capital improvement fund, thus why I asked the question. Does this apply for the school and district share and county service-related? So yeah, the county could get road improvements out of the TIF for this area, not for other areas, correct?
There is... The county has... Would you like to step in?
So we... You'll notice there is a letter, Madam Chairperson, along with members of the board from the county. The city TIF fraternity did review that. The state statute is very clear that those are outside of the district. The signal on Eagle Creek 17th probably is eligible. It's about $1 million. And those lane improvements that do not exist today would be paid for by the TIF.
But no county services?
Yes, I mean, the county...
Just like the city, we can't collect taxes off this development for 20 some years?
So at the end of 21 years, if you remember, this is going to take a long time, this would be worth at least half a billion, based on, you heard tonight, how much property taxes have gone up. There'll be a half a billion dollars added to the valuation in the city. The other thing is that the full TIF will not occur all at once. So year two or three, you're not getting... It's only when the project gets built out where it goes up. And if you'll notice from the TIF run, that's 10 or 15 years from now. So a lot of the improvements will not be expiring in 20 years because they'll be built as those sections get built out over time.
Okay.
Sorry.
Question. So as far as the county and the school districts portion of this, do we have to get permission from them to actually take their funding? Or I mean, I read in the, I guess, TIF application, there's 21 million being taken from the school district, and there's 20 million coming from the county. And we just approved a levy overwhelmingly for money to go to the school district. And now we're going to turn around and take 21 million from them.
Well, so you're not taking the money away because the money doesn't exist.
Thank you. Technically, the money doesn't exist yet. So you're not taking anything away if it doesn't exist.
And respectfully, the school district doesn't typically object to these because they get the... Their base of operations is paid out of the current tax base. They rely on students. And the issue we're having right now is some of our schools don't have students. They appreciate these projects because we're bringing new people to this area, particularly to schools that are underpopulated right now.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Can I add on top of that? So out of these 900 households that are going in, again, that live in this school district, those 21 million dollars that we were pulling from them that could go to our school for these kids are not going to go to the school. They're going to go to this development. But for?
Correct. And but the new people that move there, those children, will generate additional money that does not exist today for the school district because they get... The flip on the commercial side is most of those taxes are going to the school district. That's the state share revenue deal where the school districts really get their operating funds from. The other thing is any special levies that the school district can act over time, they have to pay them in this district. So a good example, Canterbury, even though that's in a tax district, the apartment buildings, the Triple Crown, those two buildings are paying almost half a million dollars a year in taxes because they are paying the EDA levy. They're paying all of the school district's special levies. So they're not exempt from that. It's just from the base tax. So when they do their special levies, they include all the properties in the TIF districts.
Did we let you finish? Sorry, I thought I might have cut off.
Well, I was going to say the but-for test. It's never used backward. But-for mining on this property, a TIF wouldn't be needed.
And Chair and Board members, so but-for this mine, based on the testimony I saw from Mindout and other people, the cost arose and other things here would have been substantially higher because then when they overturned the city council's decision, it was expert testimony from all those people that without a mine here, the cost of roads and other construction here would have been substantially higher.
I missed that in my reading of the appellate court decision. I didn't see that in there.
I just have a question. Since we're talking about the business itself, when they went in, did they have an exit strategy for cleanup and remediation? I mean, we have 48,000 residents that did not benefit from that financially and did not contribute to, I guess, the economic... Not economic, the tearing up of that or mining the gravel itself. They didn't contribute to that, but we're asking them to pay for it. So was there an exit strategy when this business went in?
It's 162,000 because it's county-wide. They're taking the county money too.
So Madam Chairperson and Board members, so this gravel pit goes back more than 50 years. So there was someone before the current owner that actually got shut down by the state because they brought in materials that were not appropriate for fill. And that's one of the issues we're kind of stuck with today. That when the engineers drilled down, it's not the current materials necessarily the issue. It's the stuff that's buried, you know, 70 or 80 feet down. And that's why we're flipping the entire site. The dirt will end up being used in the park areas. The better soils will then be compacted. Today, if you did a gravel pit, a new gravel pit, those people have to, by new state law, have to come up with a remediation plan that has to be agreed to by the state.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Not in place 50 years ago.
You can continue.
I understand, but I... I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. You can finish.
I'm sorry. So they've been drilling, digging this site out. And all of a sudden, we're going to ask our other 48,000 residents to foot the bill to clean this up. Which is fair is fair. If I dig a hole in my backyard, I'm not going to ask my neighbors to fill it in so I can sell it. I'm going to do it myself.
Stuck in the past or move forward to the future. And the future is not a big hole in the ground, but a $375 million... And that was the low estimate, a half a billion dollar investment in this community providing services and amenities for residents that live here today. So that big park is going to be paid for by this project through their funds. The water treatment plant, they'll get over $9 million in water connection charges from this project. The building department's going to get over $10 million in permit fees. We're a very productive building department. Those permit fees are going back into the general fund when they have excess overs. So it's not fair to say they're not contributing anything because there's going to be a lot of money invested here.
That's two decades from now. And growth is not paying for itself. The current residents are paying for it.
And again, it's a rolling TIF. So the first few years, there's nothing going, you can see in the plan.
The builder's going to want its money at some point in time. The developer's going to want its money. Whoever's doing the remediation's going to want their funds. So that goes to my next question of, will the city have to take out some kind of bond fund?
No. If you heard from our consultant here, this is a pay-as-you-go note. So the developer's going to take their projections, go to a bank, borrow at 7% or more the money necessary to do the remediation. They're on the hook personally for that.
But we say in the TIF application, page 13, section U, paragraph 2, the city may use bond and internal funding for this TIF district.
We're not. So you will see, when we have the final developer in place, we'll come back with a contract for private development as we have in every project. And all the expenses will be itemized out for the remediation and improvements. And you all will sign that contract. They will take that note, and then they will go to a bank. And the bank will have to loan that money.
All right.
Sorry, go ahead.
Themselves.
We'll let you finish your presentation. Go ahead, Mr....
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment. We've actually done a dirt TIF before with Mr. Steve Soltau's project in Southbridge. And it's a smaller scale, obviously. But it is something that this council has approved in the past. It's not something new. And the situation is the same. Mr. Soltau was faced with dirt that was unbuildable and came in and asked council the ability to have that TIF so he then can make a development. And so that's now why we have Copper Pint, which is a, you know, a restaurant that's providing services to the community and paying taxes.
Was that to the scope of $66 million? Or was it more of a lower?
No, it was a smaller TIF, but the concept is the same. It was acreage.
That was a million dollars.
It was a million.
Million versus 66 million. How long was that payback?
20 years.
It was 20 years, okay.
Madam President, the...
I believe that passed 5-0, if I remember correctly.
Madam President, the soil corrections in the Southbridge area happened to be an old city dump that nobody knew was there. In this case, we have a soil correction that needs to happen because a company, property owner, whatever, mined this property for profit. And apparently, somebody didn't check what fills they were putting into the site.
I understand our frustrations, but we're here today trying to see what we can do for the future. Go ahead.
And in my mind, I bring it back to us because we've had conversations at the city council about reclaiming that site. And in fact, every year, I think, maybe it was even every six months. I don't remember. But they were coming back to the council with reports to us. And I would have thought one of our city engineers would have been monitoring that or we would contract with somebody. So I put the onus for some of this on ourselves. That site is a hole in the ground. It's a mine. We needed that mining material when we were building out. Now it's a hole in the ground. That is going to be a hole in the ground unless we do something with it. So we can't live in the past. I think we need to move forward.
Madam President, the review by council on a yearly basis was in the agreement. I happen to have that. It was in a conditional use permit is one of the conditions. And I don't know why that didn't continue on and when that changed after 2012, 2013.
I think it had to do with more water monitoring than it actually had to do with soil compaction.
That was a quarterly thing. And the review of the conditional use permit was by both the Board of Adjustment and Appeals and the city council on a yearly basis. And that hasn't been happening, so...
Yeah, and I got here in June of 2015, and I was never aware of any requirements. And it never has been conducted since I've been here. So it clearly was done before I was arriving.
Could we let our presenter finish her presentation?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Please, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to clarify too that, you know, the tax increment financing plan, and we'll walk through the assumptions, that provides the city with the authority to use tax increment financing and doing so prior to any work being done on the site. However, any of the terms that are being discussed, you know, we said expectation is pay-as-you-go. The specific terms of the tax increment assistance will be within the TIF agreement. That'll be considered at a future time. So the tax increment financing plan is written to provide as much flexibility as possible based on the details that we do or don't know right now, knowing that the specifics of the amount of the TIF assistance, what the structure that would look like, if it's one or more pay-as-you-go notes, those would all be included within a TIF agreement moving forward after consideration of the TIF plan itself.
All righty.
So that being said, there are certain assumptions that were made to generate the tax increment revenues that were used to estimate the projected total development costs and... Or excuse me, the total public costs and estimated revenues from the new development site. You'll see it's a mixed-use development with multifamily apartments, townhomes, single-family homes, and mixed-use commercial uses. The total number of units is going to vary slightly based on what the final development plans would be. Same with the phasing for the new development. As Michael said, it is expected to occur over a 10- or 15-year period of time. The total taxable value upon completion for those various uses is 375 million. And based on the total number of units, up to 382 million. That sounds very precise. But there are, you know, certain estimates for each of the development types on a per value or per unit and per square foot basis. The tax increment plan does not include any future market value inflation. And so one of the things to consider when we're looking at rightsizing the tax increment in the maximum term of 21 years, I would say one of the advantages of not factoring in market value growth is that if market value growth does occur at a pace greater than zero, then there's a likelihood this tax increment district could be paid off sooner. Of course, saying that, we don't know over 21 years. You're assuming it's the longest term. But when you're structuring it based on no inflation and if value grows at a greater pace, then the likelihood of closing that district early is a possibility. It does include a 10% administrative retainage that is a 10% for actual out-of-pocket costs related or out-of-pocket staff costs related to administering the tax increment district in the area using current tax capacity rates to generate the tax increment. And then in the TIF plan, you are allowed to elect to delay the receipt of increment by up to four years. Based on the original development proposal, Based on the original development proposal, we were looking at delaying until twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-one years would allow for collection until twenty-forty-seven, and then the district would be decertified at December thirty-first of twenty-twenty, twenty-forty-seven, and back on the tax rolls for paid, taxes payable twenty-forty-eight. Again, this is based on the maximum twenty-one-year term of the district.
All right.
Here's a snapshot from the budget within the tax increment plan, sources and uses are equal, so here's the sixty-six million number that was referenced, based on the assumptions of value and timing for development, the total tax increment revenues would be about sixty-six million, and they would be used, be used to finance the site improvement and soil correction costs. You'll see on the public cost, fifty-nine million, six-seventy-six, that is ninety percent of the total estimated revenues, and then ten percent for administrative of six-point-six million. Again, this is the, the budget authority revenues equally in expenditures, based on the estimates used to derive the, the tax increment revenues. So there are statutory findings that the city needs to make prior to creating a tax increment district. One is that the TIF plan affords maximum opportunity consistent with the development needs of the city as a whole, that the TIF plan conforms to the general plans for development of the city as a whole, and I do believe the city, the planning commission reviewed the project, the TIF plan at their last meeting on November seventh, and that the project qualifies as a tax increment district, and again, I walk through the qualifications and requirements of a soils deficiency district, which is a designation for this type of district being proposed. The, the other statutory findings, the but-for test, and this is that the proposed development in the, in the opinion of the city would not reasonably be expected to occur solely through private investment within the reasonably foreseeable future, and again, the but-for test is that the proposed development would not occur but for the use of tax increment financing to assist with offsetting those extraordinary costs that are the barrier to that new development occurring. The last consideration is the estimated market value that's created on the site is greater with the use of tax increment financing than a no TIF had been provided. There are certain cases where perhaps without tax increment financing, there could be some smaller scale development, it's purely hypothetical, but it's occurred in other sites where if you say, but, would you be able to generate four or five hundred million of value but for cleaning up the, the site and allowing it for development? So again, those are the statutory findings, including the but-for test, that are incorporated within the establishment of a tax increment financing district. This is just discussing the financial needs, there's not one fit to what a right amount of tax increment assistance is. Again, this budget is based on the development assumptions, about sixty-six million of projected tax increment revenues, based on a present value interest rate of seven percent, that is, would support about twenty-three million of extraordinary costs in today's dollars, but these are the considerations for why you participate, and considering what the extraordinary costs of the project are. Next steps would be consideration for approval of the TIF district plan, and again, that provides the authority to enter into TIF development agreements and use tax increment as a tool to facilitate redevelopment on this project site, adopt a resolution approving the tax increment financing plan for the tax increment district, and the third is, at a future date, there would be consideration of a TIF development agreement that again would contain the specific terms of assistance between the city and developer pursuant to redevelopment of the project site. So that is my formal presentation, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Commissioner Layman, go ahead.
Madam President, I'm not sure who this is best to answer this question, but, so if we had an empty farmer's field, we wouldn't be doing a TIF, correct? Is that a Michael Kerski question, a development question? If it was an empty farmer's field, we wouldn't be doing TIF on it, because there would be no outstanding circumstances to warrant it, correct?
So, Madam Chair and Board members, so a really good example would be the West End, so D.R. Horton can flip a farm in about six months.
Yeah, it's just a simple yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, now, if we were to fill this all in and make it the farmland again, and then let whatever developer wanted to come along and develop it, they would put in their own infrastructure, correct? Like D.R. Horton has?
Correct.
Why are we not doing that instead of paying for all of the infrastructure?
Listen to the presentation.
So to fill in this hole, I mean, is over fifty million dollars. So, I mean, a good example was, I think it was at four dollars a cubic yard.
It has to be built to a structural capacity, support abilities and foundations. You can make it a farm field out of anything. So, it's-
But the TIF allows you to build the roads, correct?
In this particular TIF, anything that's within the TIF district is part of the reclamation, so those trails, the roads, all of that can be used for TIF and the signal.
All right. That was my question.
And, Madam Chairman, and the point, I think, there's only twenty-three million available, let's say it's fifty-six million, the developer's putting in all the other money.
The other money, correct, okay. Any more questions, or?
Well, I guess I'm confused, because I thought there was twenty from the county, twenty-three from the city, and twenty-one from the school.
Madam Chairperson, and that's money over the next twenty years, that doesn't exist today, we're not taking any money away, if this, if you don't approve this, there's, it's the same as it was yesterday and tomorrow.
Very good.
Except there's a hole in the ground.
Again, you have a hole, a very, a sixty or eighty-foot deep hole.
All right, so we've heard from the site anything you'd like to add to, Mr. Lara?
Um.
Or not?
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
It's, the, the only thing I can say is, the end product is thinking in the future, and it's going to be very beneficial to the city, any other, any other discussion would be moot at this point, so with that, I will make a motion to approve Resolution R. two-zero-two-four dash one-four-seven, approving tax increment financing District Twenty-two for Eagle Point Estates.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a, go ahead.
I have one comment, or more of a question, Mr. Kerski, this project went through one developer, there's not a lot of developers out there with the wherewithal to even take this on, am I correct?
Madam Chairperson and Board members, that's correct, so we had a developer who worked on it, spent over half a million dollars, and said, given I could take the fifty million dollars and go put it in the bank, this is a pretty big risk, I just don't want to take it. There are other developers we're talking to that have done these, that we'll work with, and we will bring back an agreement, but, yes, it's highly, highly speculative to the point where I talked to the lender, who said, you're going to give him twenty-three million over time, I'm only going to give him seventeen, because I think it's going to take longer to get this project done than he thinks, and I'm not willing to take that risk. I think the Ford site has scared a lot of people, you know, that project got underway, the city there made some changes, that the development community has basically just stopped developing on that site, and the developer there is having to shell out all that money, because they had minimum assessment agreement, so even though there's not buildings there, they're paying into that TIF. So I think the, Michaela's point, we base it at zero, so as you heard, property values continue to go up here. The thought is, it will not, we don't, we've never had a district, as long as I've been here, that hasn't been paid off fast, I mean, Amazon's the best example, it was paid off very quickly. If this project can get off the ground, get developed, houses sell as quickly as they're selling today in Shakopee, we anticipate it will not take the full twenty years.
Thank you. Just a quick comment, I know meanwhile that we might want to find, you know, who to blame, or, I, I, my personal view is that, you know, this will be a huge impact, positive, you know, within and around the benefits to the, the community that will happen, and if it happens, again, just to, you know, remind us, it's a pay-as-you-go note, if a development happens, again, it is a huge risk, and if we do find a developer who's willing to take that, that challenge. And, and just one second, sorry, you had your turn. You know, looking at all the examples, and, and, you know, looking at Apple Valley, Maple Grove, Centennial Lakes, and Edina, eventually, you know, we have to give it time, I know, and, and it, it takes a while, it's going to take a while, and hopefully, we do find someone, and, and we see the benefits that will come. I, I know it's hard right now, and we're trying to figure out, like, how to stop it and not go forward, but I think this is an opportunity that we have, and if we would just let, let it sit there, you know, we don't get much out of it, you know, we won't get anything out of it, to be honest, so I'll let you make your last comment, and then we'll vote.
I was just going to say, we, we get a lot of trust from the residents, they're basically trusting us with their hard-earned money to make the right decisions on their behalf, and be good stewards of their monies, in this case, I don't think this is being good stewards.
How?
We're taking their money, we're putting it in a gravel pit that we collectively did not dig that hole and caused the problem, but now we're asking everybody to fix it.
We're not taking any money away from anybody.
There's nothing to take away right now.
Nothing there. Do we have a second?
What we just discussed, over the next, Madam President, do we have a second?
Yes, you do have, one of those-
Call the motion, call the-
Call the question, all right, we will, call, 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 the question has been, has been asked, and so I'm going to ask if staff, just to get a good clarification, if you could do a vote by roll call, I'd appreciate that.
No.
No.
Mr. Layman?
Nope.
Mr. Lara?
Yes.
Ms. Contreras? Yes. So we have, we have the motion, we have the vote, so motion passes three, two. I shall continue, sorry, lost my paper here.
Five A.
We are on five A, so we have our EDA bill list, to see any questions on that? Nope, no questions?
No questions.
All right, number six, someone like to make a motion, Jesse?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to, I would believe that would be December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four.
A second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Madam Chair, you know, they didn't put the adjourn-to date on here, is that seventeenth, correct?
Usually, it's the second meeting that we do.
Mr. Kerski?
December third.
We don't have an adjourn-to date on this EDA agenda, what would be the correct date?
May it be the first, your first meeting in December.
Oh, third.
December third.
December third, we want to make that correction.
Just wanted to make sure we're doing that correct.
Thank you.
We're having some agenda issues, but we will work them out.
We'll get them, we'll get them all straightened out, so, and, so December second, we all voted, so, thank you, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Madam President. All right, we'll call a Shakopee City Council, back to order, what do we got here? Brings us onto twelve A, Tax Increment Financing District Number Twenty-two, Preliminary Plat and Planned Unit Development PUD for Eagle Creek, or Eagle Point Estate.
Mr. Mayor, I can make a motion to adopt ordinance zero-two-zero-two-four-TAC-zero-one-zero, approving planned unit development, District Number Fourteen, Eagle Point Estates, and approve Resolution R. twenty-twenty-four-TAC-one-forty-six, approving the preliminary plat and Eagle Point Estates, and approve Resolution R. twenty-twenty-four-TAC-one-four-seven, approving a tax increment financing TIF District Number Twenty-two.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Contreras?
Just, Mr. Mayor, one question. Mr. Kerski?
The tax, you know what you're going to say, because I was going to say it before you could finish, the, the TIF district requires to open and, to have a public hearing.
So before you adopt a motion, you should open the public hearing, because the resolution of the council approving the TIF requires a public hearing before this-
Only the TIF district.
Only on, only on the TIF district.
So should I just leave that last resolution off?
Hold on, hold on, let me get this straight from the lawyer, do we want to break these resolutions down, or can we do them all, all at one, as long as it's in a public hearing setting?
Here's my suggestion, so the record's clear on this, okay? I would suggest you open a public hearing.
Correct.
On the TIF resolution, hold the public hearing, close the public hearing, adopt that resolution, and then take each other action one by one.
Okay, so now we need to ask the motion maker and second order to withdraw their motion and second.
I can withdraw.
I'll withdraw mine, too.
And then I will make a motion to open a public hearing.
So, yeah, let's call for a public hearing, a, a motion to open a public hearing would be in order.
Just on the resolution approving the TIF.
Okay, a motion to open a public hearing on Resolution R. twenty-twenty-four dash one-forty-seven, approving tax increment financing TIF District Number Twenty-two.
So I'll move.
Second.
Who's got the second over here?
Second.
Mr. Whiting and Ms. Contreras.
Yep.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, Bush passes, public hearing is open. Okay? Mr. Kerski?
Mayor, I think we've gone over everything, I think it'd be appropriate to take-
You don't want the exercise, and do it all over again?
Here's your chance, though, put the public.
All right, yes, if you want to speak on this issue, please step up to the podium, and do we need name and address for the records?
Yes.
So, my name is-
You're going to have to speak into the microphone. We still can't hear you, so pull it closer to you.
Can you hear me now?
No.
I don't know where.
You have to speak up.
Can you hear? Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just talk right into the microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Very good.
All right. Okay, my name is Mustafa Asandu, I know it's already been watered, but I have a few questions, I want to know, on behalf of the community, would you do the same if it's your money? Does anyone know the future? What is the guarantee of this project to be successful, given the fact we are investing community money? And what is the guarantee it is only going to be cost of sixty-six million? As my congressman Whiting said, we use that hole for city development, and we paid for it, it was not free, are we still paying for it? How about if there is a real estate market crash, does city have an exit plan? Is there any risk assessed? And your decision is going to affect the life of forty-eight thousand residents, so I need answer of those questions.
Can I comment on that, Mr. Mayor?
After him. Go ahead.
There's no money involved here, this is, you must not have been watching the presentation, because this is money that's future out there, that's, could be taxes, that we're going to use to develop this-
No one have a crystal ball to see the future, sir.
You're right.
All right, let's, let's stay, let's stay on topic here.
If I could, I, I think you should let the people speak, let them finish, see if there's anybody else who wants to speak.
And then address it all at once, okay, very good. Do you have anything else, sir?
What's that?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to the city council on this matter? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bill Mars, twelve-seventy-nine, Sider Circle, mayor and council. Most of us have been here a long time, and have voted on numerous TIF districts. Matter of fact, I believe ninety percent of every TIF, TIF district in the last twenty years in the city of Shakopee is actually paid off early, because of the enhanced value that it's provided, and now is on the tax rolls. To great enormous benefit of our community, this is a specific soil district here, very unique, the last one we had was a restaurant by a private developer that had dirty dirt, and we did that, we approved it, members of the council voted for that, I voted for that, and we have a restaurant. We also have two apartment buildings downtown that required TIF, they weren't dirty dirt, but there was dirty dirt in both those sites for remediation, which were covered under the, a standard TIF district, and now we have thriving apartments and restaurants in those. We had Amazon, which was a great controversy, but we got all those roads improved by that increment, captured increment, public benefit, not on the taxpayers. We have Canterbury, biggest one, many years ago, I don't, I didn't bring any real hard numbers here, but I'll just say that I'll bet you the overall evaluation of Canterbury today is getting close to the true value of what it's supposed to be built, when it's built out, and that's prior to the amphitheater being open late next year, or more development. The TIF districts, RAR, All Saints, Sandmar, have all been very successful for our community, whether it's manufacturing, development, public benefit. This site would not go forward without TIF help. There's plenty of other gravel pits around the metro area, drive around, take a good hard look, those took, drifted off, get off the ground, look at them today, thriving communities that generate lots of tax benefits. You have to have a long vision, what's it going to look like in twenty years, what's the value? We use it on the council, you have to look at that value. We're going to help do the remediation of the soil, in the end, we're going to get four-hundred million, whatever the value is, and get that, yes, they'll pay their taxes, as they do now, they, they do pay into the funds, if there's a special assessment, they pay in, so do all the other TIFs that are around town, so this, this is long-term vision, we've had long-term vision on this council in the last twenty-plus years, and I believe every TIF district, eight, nine, I lose track, have been a direct benefit to our community long-term, and I think this would, too. I encourage you all to think beyond yourself, beyond today, beyond next week, actually, Actually, this district won't even get started for several years. That's how long it takes, long lead time, and it is a big risk to the developer. Hey, I'm not going to get, my development's not getting, even getting ground for five, six, seven years, and then I can start building. This is a unique opportunity. We see what happens with the other gravel pits in the other communities around town. I encourage you all to drive around and see what those turned into. They are benefiting their community, but it takes vision of 20-plus years for our community, for our leaders, to look beyond themselves, look beyond tomorrow, and look at what it will be for our community and the true benefit. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Mars. Anybody else? It's a public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this matter, please come forward.
I don't think anybody knows me here, but I'm Sandy Bush Novak. I am the daughter of one of the original owners. My father, Lando Bush, was one of the original owners along with the Noterman family. When I hear about the things that have been mentioned, the standards were different back in those days, and they complied with everything that was written and came to the council year after year after year for those reviews. So it's, it's hurtful to hear his memory of my father talked about in a way that is not truthful. He, he did things to develop this property, and the intention was to mine it so that it would benefit the community for a while and then develop it later on. In closing, the Shakopee gravel has complied with all of these things. I have been an educator for years, assistant superintendent, and kids will benefit from this wonderful location and your great schools. I hope that you vote for the tax increment funding of this property. Its prime location will be just a kudo for this, in this wonderful community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else would like to come forward and speak on this matter? It is public hearing. Second call. Seeing none, motion to close, close the public hearing would be in order.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. You get over there? Discussion on the motion?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, public, motion passes, public hearing is closed. It's the wishes of the council. Mr. Thompson questioned, do they want to take the Resolution R. 2024-147 first, since that was the intent of the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R. 2024-TAC-147, approving tax increment financing TIF District Number 22.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Whiting?
We had a comment about this being funded by the city, and I want to remind that once this TIF district is established, the developer will go to a bank and get the money. That's where the money comes from. If this fails, the taxpayers lose nothing. We'll find somebody else to develop it, so.
He's doing that one.
That's where I'm at on it. That's my comments.
Okay. Any other comments?
No comments.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Motion three to two, with Delaney and myself in the negative. Mr. Whiting?
With, with Mr. Thompson's approval, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 02024-TAC-10, approving a planned unit development, District Number 14, Eagle Point Estate.
Uh, it's 010.
010, okay.
Okay.
I'll second.
You going to do the second one also?
Well, we can take it one at a time, I think was the recommendation.
Yes, one at a time, yes.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
So we're on the PUD, this is.
We, we are on Resolution R. 2020, 2024-010, approving a planned unit development, District Number 14.
Okay.
Questions on the motion?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Four to one. And wishes of councilors wanted to go.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R. 2024-146, approving the preliminary Platte for Eagle Point Estates.
Second.
Laura, second by Contreras. Any discussion on the motion? So the preliminary Platte is the concept plan basically that we have seen, is that correct?
Mayor and Council, in your packet, I believe, was actually the engineered plan, but it's basically that item that's up on the screen.
Okay. All right. Any questions on the motion? Discussion, discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Passes four to one. All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. That takes us to 13 workshop. We have none, 14 liaison administrative reports, and what side did we start last time?
Side.
Is that where we started?
Yes.
Start on this side.
All right. Not a whole lot going in the last week or so. We had our Coalition 169 meeting. We did narrow down our priorities for the upcoming year. We'll present those at the meeting in December when we roll that out to the full membership. The SMSC will be hosting our December meeting, and that's about it. As we, once we roll that out and get the materials, we'll bring that to council, let you guys know exactly what we're lobbying for.
And everybody was invited to that membership meeting.
Yes, they were.
And one knows that?
It'll be December 4th. Emails went out. If you didn't receive email, everybody got an email?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Fourth, at the SMSC. Link Center. All right. Thank you, Mr. Delaney, Mr. Whiting.
I have my MVTA meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Contreras?
Yes. Friday, the, November 8th, I attended this scale meeting. There was a presentation for the 2025 legislative priorities, which was pretty long, but if you guys don't mind, I can share that, the whole entire, there's a lot.
And I think we've been talking about less of a list that benefits everybody is better than too long of a list where people read it at the state house and say, garbage can't go.
Exactly. All right. And then the second part to that was the meeting host, which was Scott County, just gave a, an update on what's going on around, and that was it.
All right, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Mr. Lara?
This afternoon, I attended the signing of the new academy's champion. Canterbury is now going to be championing the Academy of Business and Entrepreneurship at the high school, so congratulations to that partnership.
Business and entrepreneurship. Okay, very good. I don't have a report. I'm going to save mine over until next meeting. Mr. Reynolds, any report?
Nothing from me, sir.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Where does that take us to?
Other business.
Whoever got the agenda so that I can flip it over like I normally do, I appreciate that. Other business.[1752.32]